Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board for October 23rd, 2025. At this time, I'd like to now call the meeting to order and begin by introducing the members of the Planning Board and our staff. If you'd like to begin, Jim?
Jim Davis, member.
Cheryl Tagaya, Secretary.
Maggie O'Field, member.
Sean Bayne, member.
And Meredith Hall, serving as Chair. And this evening, we have with us our new Planning Director and Director of Planning and Community Development, Liz, if you'd like to introduce yourself.
Elizabeth Manning, Director of Planning and Community Development. Happy to be here.
Great to have you. Our next, we'll move to our administrative items. We do have some sets of minutes, but we have not had the edits that you, because they all came in at once, so I wasn't expecting to have those yet. So we're not prepared to make a vote on those tonight. But if everyone can review the drafts, and then when Cheryl has time, we'll be notified if there's any edits to those minutes. So I'd like to defer those, the vote on those minutes for this evening. And so the next item we have is our future meeting dates. And our next regularly scheduled meeting currently is scheduled for November 13th. I'm sorry, previously, we will have, we have town meeting that we're scheduled to meet October 27th. And if it continues beyond one night, it'll be Tuesday, October 28th. So town meeting 27th and 28th. And then our next regularly scheduled meeting is November 13th. And then the following week would put us into Thanksgiving week. At this time, I think that we might not need to have that meeting. We will have just gone through town meeting. We will begin to discuss further our goals and our next steps at the November 13th meeting. So unless there's something that comes up, we could call a meeting that, you know, that previous week, but at this time, I don't think unless Liz gets something that would be urgent that we need to act on during that week.
Agreed. At 6:30 for town meeting, right?
At 6:30 for town meeting. And do you know if we have a room, a specific room?
Yes. Does 243 sound right? Because that's, I posted that on the, posted that notice.
That's our typical room, I believe.
Yeah, okay. Yes. Lynn Denapoli had set that up for us.
Great. Good. So that will be great for our next meeting. And now we can move to our staff update. Liz, if there's anything that, any new updates that you would like to share with us?
Sure. So on the topic of meeting dates, do you folks typically get a, an upfront sort of like yearly calendar that we vote on or that we look at, you know, in advance? Would that be useful? Because, you know, if there's any holidays or any kind of conflicts?
We certainly could do that. We've really been sort of looking on a month-to-month basis, planning with, we typically meet the second and, for Thursday of the month. So we certainly could have that, so we could.
I was just gonna suggest that it would be good, because then we could plug in town meeting and back out when articles are due to be submitted for the warrant. Because we always find ourselves up against a time crunch. So I don't know, it's usually in May, but I don't know if it's, excuse me, the same week always in May? And then there's usually a fall in October. I don't know, again, if it's usually the same week. And then, you know, this year, we've had a couple of extra thrown in. But I think just getting the annual and the fall, kind of on a calendar.
Gives us, we can project.
Right.
Yeah.
Is that helpful?
Yeah, that would be.
Yeah, I've just, I've done that in the past.
That would be great.
I figured I'd just throw it out there if you wanted to.
For people who travel and work-wise scheduling.
Yeah.
You know, whether people have to be, need to be out of town, whether they, you know, what their schedule accommodates.
And town meeting is the same every year, or they set that within a couple of months of the meeting?
It's typically in May, but it can vary depending on where things are and how much time is needed.
I feel like it's like, is it like the first week in May typically?
I always said it was like the first Monday in May or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, something like that.
I think that's always the.
Or the second Monday.
Okay, so that was the calendar.
It was pushed back later this year because of MBTA and making sure that everything was ready.
Right.
That was unusual, so.
Oh, right, right. So the second item is the FY '27 budget. I am needing to have some feedback to Nick on that, as far as, you know, what folks are thinking of in terms of additional funding for studies and what have you. So he said that, oh, actually, I thought we were meeting on the 6th. I don't know why I had the 6th in my calendar. So I was thinking you guys might have bumped it up because of the Thanksgiving conflict. I'll circle back with him on the 13th. He was confident that the 6th was gonna give him plenty of time to, you know, take on board, you know, anything additional. I think the existing allocation is like 50,000, and I think it's been that sort of consistently for a couple of years, maybe. I don't know how far back I looked. I think I got some information back to like FY '24. The rest of the budget is pretty straightforward in terms of, you know, some professional development and supplies and things like that. And then the budget for the admin is in that, is in the Planning Board budget as well. So I'll have some more information for that, on that, before we meet again. So that's that. Any questions on that?
Just, I just was gonna say, yeah, in the past, we did request additional funding for a consultant for doing the recodification. Because that was gonna be a big ticket number. That's probably what you were gonna say.
Yeah, okay.
That that was going to be, you know, that would have taken all of our funds, if not more. So, but, so we did not get that funding at the last round. So that might be something to earmark and maybe just get a rough ballpark of what.
I think we were asking maybe 40,000 last year to go into the contingent budget. I don't think it made it, but.
It was just under 100,000.
I remember Nick asking, saying we could probably get 100. We could justify 100 for next year when he was here. I'm not Nick, Tim, when he was here.
Okay. So from 50 to 100? Because you typically get 50 and then maybe, maybe size 100?
We were looking for 100.
And Nick did say that that, something significant like that, and we can talk about when we get to our goals, that if it's something that impacts the town so significantly that free cash can also be a source, if it's something really that, you know, is impactful to a project that we needed to do.
Okay, so. It would be very helpful to have this for you, for the new building commissioner, for our zoning board of appeal, and for us, for applicants, et cetera. Because our zoning code is not easy to work with. It has, it's outdated in some places. It doesn't have user friendliness in terms of like zoning tables, you know, dimensional standard tables or dimensional requirement tables. And so that's not even kind of, you know, what we might want to amend. That's just how it's set up and structured. There's things that are in conflict with state law that needs to be fixed. So we went to electronic a couple of years ago, finally. So that's much better. So getting it fixed would even be more helpful. So that's kind of the background. We've been wanting to do that for years.
All right.
Okay, we've taken a first step, but yeah.
Yeah, good. All right, that sounds very doable. Not easy, but doable.
So that's just something, but we can, and speaking of, I was able to meet the new building commissioner, and he's wonderful at another meeting. And he's, would like to come and visit us. And so had mentioned, I think he's spoken to Liz, because there's a lot of overlap, a lot of interaction between scenic roads, you know, applications that come in.
Sign review.
Sign review. And so I was gonna invite him to come to the first meeting in November.
So one of the things I think that would be helpful with that meeting is we draft decisions, and then he or his department is left to enforce them. And we don't have a template. We've been trying to work towards some consistency, but not having a template. I know that one of the prior building commissioners had expressed it was difficult to have different conditions for different projects. So they'd have to have a different, when they went out to the project site, they'd be looking at it differently. And so I think just having that kind of feedback would be helpful. And then, one of the things that I did some time ago, again, former building commissioner, so what are you seeing as a challenge? Like, there were interpretations that the commissioner had to make that he thought were very difficult. So if we're looking at the codification, you know, how do we make it easier? Like, they don't wanna have to use judgment. They want to be able to say, here it is, it meets or not, in terms of the zoning.
Sure.
And so I think that kind of feedback would be helpful, too.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I would, I would imagine that if, if this recodification, when it does get underway, like, he's gonna be a key, he'll be a key part of that committee or task force, or however it's comprised, you know, absolutely. And I've had, he's, I've been in his office three times, he's been in my office three times already. So, yeah, so there's been a lot of, a lot of back and forth about the, what's, you know, what's coming in the door.
I think it'd be just good to have him with us to hear his pain points.
Yeah.
And he probably has plenty, you know? And maybe we'll learn something that we could incorporate into what we do to make, you know, his work a little easier.
And he's got a lot more coming down the pike with the light bylaw, with the ADU bylaw. I mean, he's gotta force all that. He's just gonna get busier.
Yeah, totally.
It's nice, because I think he comes with a great deal of experience from other communities and the way he's seen things work in other towns, things that work or don't work, and so.
He came, he came in today and gave me a heads up on, on the 40Bs, because he said, you know, in my old, in my old job, you know, they had me, they had me reporting to the state on the, on the affordable units. And he said, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure you know, when those, when those certificates of occupancy are issued, you know, that's when, that's when that process, you know, needs to. And I said, I said, hey, thank you so much for the heads up. I said, I'm so new that like, that I don't even know where the 40Bs are yet. I mean, I know there's eight of them, right? There's eight, I think. And I read somewhere, I think it was in your report, about, you know, there's 500 units or some odd. Some are in litigation, some just came out of litigation, some are half-built, some are occupied, whatever. So, so he's, 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 he's great. He's great, you know, for him to come in and do that today, I was really, I was like, thank you, thanks for the heads up.
I mentioned one other thing, you mentioned the 40Bs. In the CPC meeting, the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust mentioned that, you know, if they're all built, we could reach or achieve our 10%. But that wasn't necessarily meaning that we had 10% of affordable units, because we're able to count all the units, market rate units on the rentals. I think it would be helpful to see how many we actually have that are affordable. So if there's a chart that can be put together, that, you know, can provide us an update, that would be helpful.
Sure. Absolutely. The actual affordable units. Yeah, okay, good. And then the folks from MAPC, we had a quick phone call with them, I think it was last week, on the feasibility study that they've conducted, and they're ready to come in and make a presentation to this board. So would it be, does it make sense to ask them to come in in November? Were you thinking sooner the better?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I haven't had a chance to look over much of anything yet. I had asked for some, you know, some of the, you know, some of the background information on their process and sort of what's already gone into the, into the, to the report to date. But I think they're gonna have some slides to share, so I'll make sure I get those out to you guys in advance. And, and I think they're gonna have some scenarios that they can offer to, that are, that they are deeming feasible. So, so that's good.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, so, so that's moving forward.
So we'll add that to the agenda. Okay, anything else, or?
I think that's it for me.
That covers that. Okay, great. So then we can move forward to a public comment. I'm not seeing anyone here this evening, but if there is anyone on Zoom, you can raise your hand, and we will invite you for comments.
No attendees.
Zero attendees.
No attendees this evening, okay. So we can now move to number four on our agenda, October 2025, special town meeting item, discussion, Article 5, report and recommendation of the Master Plan Presentation Committee. So when we last met, we spoke on this, and I felt like it was new to people. Some people had just learned that this was an article when it was printed in the town, in the town warrant. And I thought, it's good just for everybody to take a step back, think about this, think about what's coming, and, you know, the implications of what this means and how it would affect the Planning Board. And after sitting with it, I, I had a recommendation, which obviously you all would need to discuss. I mentioned it to Liz, and Liz shared it with Cheryl. Cheryl's gonna have a meeting with MPIC, the Select Board is aware, and the Warrant Committee. But what, when I was first reading this, what I was concerned about is that it would be confusing to the residents in town and to town meeting on the role and the responsibilities and the process. And this is aside from the report, because obviously, we're gonna welcome the report, and Cheryl has worked incredibly hard, and there's, so is the committee, and it's a great 40-page document, which honestly, I haven't even really been able to dig into yet, and that will take some time.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven, I'm sorry. Yeah. That we'll have to dig into, to look at the recommendations, but these are, at this time, recommendations. So what I found, and what I expressed to Liz, was I thought, I don't want this to be a confusing process, where MPIC thinks, their understanding is that they have one set of responsibilities, the Planning Board believes that they have another set of responsibilities. So the best and simplest way that I think we can move forward with this, because I think no one wants to say, you know, we're just gonna take the master plan and put it on the shelf now. Like, I don't think, I think we all understand that there's things that didn't get completed, that maybe we still have the opportunity to complete, things that are positives, that would be benefit, a benefit in having this new committee. But what, so what the language, it's a very simple language correction, and we can discuss this, is under Article 5, Number 3, is where it says to make recommendations regarding the scope and key focus areas of future master plans. We insert the simple language of make recommendations to the Planning Board regarding the scope and key focus areas of future plans. What I wanted to, and I think, and Liz can comment too on this, is just to clarify and solidify the role of the Planning Board with, when it comes to master plan. And so statutorily, and that's where I think this is, it's very clear, there's no, you know, no question about the language, is that under Master and All Law, Chapter 41, Section 81D, the Planning Board is under the authority, the, not only the, a majority of the Planning Board would need to vote on any future master plans and determine what that focus would be, but also any amendments. So all of this is, and Cheryl was saying that, is all we're doing is recommendations at this point. So I just wanted to, because I think there was confusion, you know, when I talked to Jay Funling a little bit, that.
I think there is confusion even about the role of the committee, because I listened to the town moderator and Warrant Committee's video, and I said, oh, that's, that's all right. So, I mean, our committee is very clear about that, and we spoke at length about that it's recommendations, and we, and we spoke to Nick about it, and he worked on the language with us. So what the committee's intent has been is that it's recommendations. But, you know, as far as this change, I was able to get the committee together for a 1 o'clock meeting tomorrow.
Right.
For me personally, this is consistent with what we've talked about. So, I mean, we have a 20-minute meeting schedule. I don't think it's going to be a long discussion. So, you know, our primary concern, as you know, was that we wanted to see the work continue, that we felt it was, you know, very likely that without some monitoring, that, you know, there would be less progress. And that there's still plenty of good work, or good recommendations in the plan itself that weren't fully realized, and that, that's why we suggested continuing with not just the implementation monitoring, but with making some suggestions. And you saw in the report, the kind of the nature of the suggestions, the recommendations or not.
Right.
Exactly how to do it, but here's an area that needs attention, for example. And I think that's, arriving at those recommendations took some time. So just, whatever they get turned over to whom is responsible, some of those are responsible parties, do lie outside of Planning Board and Planning Department, as we spoke about. It's the Select Board or DPW or Parks and Rec, and, you know, like Parks and Rec is an independently elected board, so, you know, Conservation Commission and so forth. So the committee has made, as you will remember from early on, recommendations to the Select Board for Milton Landing. And it made recommendations to the Planning Board for the zoning. So it's that sort of recommendation, like, here's a study, or here's what's there. We suggest that you follow up with it.
Which is great. I just wanted to give peace of mind that any changes to the master plan, or any future master plans, have to.
They have to go through the.
They have to go through the Planning Board. And that's where I, when I was first reading it, I was not sure that that, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody was on the same plane as far as what the process would be. So there wouldn't be confusion or, or any conflict, or some conflict there. But making recommendations to these different committees, certainly, you know.
But I also just wanted to comment on the timing of the recommendation of the article. We were not aware that we were even really going to need an article for town meeting until Nick emailed me, and I went back and looked on July 31st. And he said, you're going to need an article at least just to deliver the report of the committee. And we were still working on our recommendations at the time, and we had a meeting on August 4th, and we started our discussion, but the articles were due on August 7th. So we had a one-week window in order to generate an article.
That's why I didn't know there was gonna be an actual article.
No, and then we didn't have meetings. We had a meeting of the Planning Board on August 5th, so in the middle of those two MPIC meetings where we had to do it. And then we didn't meet until, you know, the middle of September, and then I was traveling for a couple of weeks, and so the committee couldn't. We also had a, we used to have staff support with the Assistant Planning, so we actually had a couple of meetings that, you know, didn't get posted in time. So we had to, it pushed our work out a little bit. So I, just as I said before, it was our intent to have our recommendations done sooner. And I recognize it would have been better for all of you and for all of us if it had been. But here we are, I think we did good work, and I think if this, if everyone's supportive of this, I'm sure that would be.
And there's a really good resource guide in the binders that have been given, that when we joined as a Planning Board member, in the very back, the last section, there's a, there's a resource guide for, for planning and all the different aspects, which highlights and sort of gives an explanation of the process of the master plan and what, and for the different aspects, whether it's site plan approval, and it walks you through sort of the, the basics. And that's where the clarification, which was confirmed with reading the statute, just to make sure that, that I, my understanding was, you know, was correct, and making sure that what our responsibilities were, and now what this new master plan would be, committee would be. So, yeah.
I definitely, I probably need a few minutes to, I'm not sure how I feel about what, what you, I'm not, I'm not opposed, but I have different ideas. And I appreciate the explanation from Cheryl, because as I said in the last meeting, I felt completely uninformed. The first I learned of this was when I took the warrant out of my mailbox the day of our last meeting, and that was the first time I saw it. And, you know, I'm not really a fan of rushing anything, just not. You know, but the only thing I feel like we should rush is if the building's on fire, we should rush to get out. And definitely with regard to any bylaw that really becomes governance of the town, you know, I don't like the idea, I don't like the idea of you having hustle so quickly. The 31st of July, all of a sudden, you're informed that you need an article prepared, and it's the worst time of year for everybody. We all plan vacations, and it's hard getting people together. And, you know, when you go back to the beginning of, of this article, is it 14? I think it was 2014. There was a collaborative effort to recognize that this was an important committee that the town needed, right? And, and I wasn't, I wasn't a member then, but this was an article proposed by both the Select Board and the Planning Board, because we needed, we needed more resources than we had. We needed more resources than the Planning Board and the Select Board to make sure that we were able to implement the master plan. And I believe that a committee will be valuable to the town. I do, definitely. However, and on Monday night at town meeting, I'll, I'll make the same comments with regard to this article at town meeting. I would request that the article be pulled back, that the MPIC be granted another year extension, and we collaboratively create this article together with MPIC and the Planning Board and the Select Board, if they choose to participate. Its purposes, I think its purpose is highly valuable and really important, and we know how time-restricted the Planning Board is. You know, it feels to me like very often, we can't even keep up with what comes in front of us, and, and we have substantial, you know, I, I didn't read critically the 47 pages, but there's a lot there. So there's so much in the 47 pages, I think it identifies the importance of having the committee, right? If you didn't realize the committee was necessary, you look at the 47 pages and you realize that a lot of that, we don't have enough time to get into the weeds of, and you, Liz, probably don't have enough time to get in the weeds of. So if we have a volunteer committee that will get into the weeds of it and will make recommendations, I think it's a great idea. So I would be a supporter of the committee continuing. I would be a supporter of extending, we granted an 11th year, right? We had a 10-year term, we granted an 11th year at the, at a previous town meeting. Grant a 12th year while we work together to create an article that is collaboratively brought to town meeting, not in a rushed format like this was by a small group of people, without any participation of the Planning Board.
So Sean, is there something in the recommendation that's particularly concerning to you? Because last year, the amendment to the charge of the committee did have an inclusion of making recommendations. It said to make what was changed, so I included that in the back of the report as an appendix. It said, insert the following sentence into the charge, said committee is expected to recommend targeted updates to the town's master plan and to submit those recommendations to the Planning Board and Select Board for approval. So we already made that change last year, so we're really just making it a standing committee instead of a committee that has a finite time period.
Well, that's my concern. That's my concern.
You don't want it to have a fin, you want it to have a finite time term?
No, 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 at all. When town meeting last year, accepted that article, passed that article, town meeting understood that we were going from 10 years to 11 years for that purpose to be accomplished. Now, I'm sorry, just let me finish, and I'll, I'll turn the mic back over to you. Now we're creating a permanent committee. This is no longer called. longer called the Master Plan Implementation Committee, this is called the Master Plan Committee. And it will last in perpetuity, or until town meeting decides that that committee isn't going to, isn't going to exist any longer. So given that we're going to create a committee that's going to last in perpetuity, and given that, I believe it has great value, I would like the article to be created in a collaborative way, and, and I don't want to go line by line tonight, in the Planning Board meeting, to do that. I would like the members of the committee and the Planning Board to be able to work together, to discuss what's written here, and, and then come to town meeting with a, with an article that we have all worked on together. I'd love to sit down with the, with the folks that are on the committee, and, and talk about their charge. I want to talk about what we were asked to do for 10 years, you know, I, I haven't, now maybe I need to be told where the reports are, but I asked about the reports, which should be three reports for each of the years, which would be now 33 years, 33 reports. I, I'd like to be a participant in creating an article that can serve all the purposes, and it can be successful. And if the reporting was onerous over the last 10 years, and was too difficult to accomplish, let's talk about it, let's reduce it, let's make it something that can be done. I, I just want to be a participant in this. I, I just don't want, I, I cannot go to town meeting and support an article of this nature, that is intended to bring recommendations to the Planning Board, unless I was allowed to be a participant in the formation of the article. And I, I think that's very reasonable. I, I will be, when we create this article together, I will be a supporter of it, and an advocate for it. We need it. But I don't believe it should be done, you know, absent the full participation of the Planning Board, and the Select Board, if they choose to be participants in it. They, their agenda is overwhelming. If they can manage what they have to do, and also be a participant in the formation of this article together, great, love to have them with us. But if they choose to say, "No, MPIC and the Planning Board can put that article together, and we'll take a look at it after you have it together," that's okay, too. But I'm, I'm a, I'm an advocate, and I'm a supporter of a collaborative process. So when we bring this to town meeting, you know, all five members of the Planning Board can say, "You know what? I was part of that, I believe it's necessary, and, and I would suggest to the members of, of town meeting that you support it."
So just a couple things, Sean. The reporting didn't have to be in writing, so there were some times I delivered reports as a presentation at town meeting, other times, you know, like when we brought particular recommendations to a, to either the Planning Board, or to the Select Board. It was an update at that time. So there also are reports that I submitted on behalf of the committee to the annual report. So if you pull your annual report out of your shelf, if you get them every year, you'll find a report of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. But I also want to mention, like, at the charge of the committee, at the end of the 10 years, which was extended to 11, is to report to this board, the Select Board, and town meeting its recommendation whether the plan should be updated. So, our recommendation is that the plan should continue, and it should have targeted updates. And in order for that, our feeling was, the way for that to be achieved, as our recommendation, is for a successor committee to be established. That's our recommendation, you don't have to take it, but that's the committee's recommendation. There was a lot of discussion about it. We're a committee of six, we've had a vacancy, we know we could be seven, but we've had a vacancy for a while. And so, I did talk to the, we had a meeting already on the books, between our two Planning Board meetings, and I did bring up the discussion from the last Planning Board meeting, and asked the members if they would like to change their recommendation, and they did not. So, you know, I can bring it up again tomorrow, in our 20 minutes that we've got scheduled, which I thought would just be the dislanguishing, so it was not easy to get everyone together, but I can bring it up again. But we felt as if we're, we've done what the charge is, is to make this recommendation, and to deliver the report. You know, there's, how you, you feel as if it might be different, I'd be interested to hear. But, you know, having chaired the committee for 10 years, and having been on the Master Plan Committee for two before that, and having been on this Planning Board for 10, the, there's a lot of work that goes into monitoring this master plan. There's a ton that's in it. You know, if you delve into it, as I've been working on a presentation for town meeting, and working on summaries in the report with the committee members, is, you know, you see those tracking sheets at the end of this, all those strategies, and you look at it, they don't tie exactly back to the top 20 recommendations, and they don't tie exactly back to the seven goals. So you, you have, and then they don't tie exactly back to the required sections that are in Mass General Law, that you said. So there's a lot to really seeing the big picture, and then the details, and then who's responsible, to make sure that something's happening, and all the checkpoints that are required to sort of see. All of that information that you'll, that you find in here is, you know, for the most part, is current as a couple of weeks ago, in terms of adding in information. The, I, I think one of the, of the things is that it would be good for this board to dig into that master plan, into this report, on a more detailed level. There are things that are asked of the Planning Board to do, this Planning Board in a, under a different constitution, because I'm the legacy member here, all signed off on what's in it. And so, we have not, as a board, acted on some of the things that are in it. So we have responsibility, in terms of its implementation, that we need to fulfill. And so, I would like to have a time in which we really talk about that. We talk about, and after everyone has a chance to read it, so.
You're, I am not diminishing the value of the work, the effort. That's not what I'm talking about at all. You know, I, I, I'm not questioning how much time and effort went into it. Two things I questioned in the last meeting. One was the reporting, and whether it had been done. And, and maybe, some of it's been done, but maybe not in a consistent format. It hasn't been the same way every year. I don't, I don't know.
It's the same format every year.
It's hard for us to follow when we don't, you know, maintain format. Or maybe that's just me. Maybe everybody else can follow format when it just continues to deviate. So I, I questioned the, the structure of the reporting, and whether it was consistent, and whether the charge of the committee was executed. Did it report as it was supposed to report? And I also, and if I could finish, and, and also, as I said, it came upon us two weeks ago. That was the first time I became aware of it. So, I, when you met with the members, they certainly didn't hear what I just said, within the last 10 or 15 minutes. I support continuing for another year, the MPIC as it exists. We don't want to lose that. But I'd like to be able to collaboratively prepare an article that creates this committee, as I said, in perpetuity, to continue the charge of supporting us with master plan and recommendations. I'm not opposed to it all. I, I'm telling you, we need it. But I do think that the article, and the charge of the committee, is something that we should all work together on, with MPIC, to, to have an article that we can go to town meeting and say unanimously, "The Planning Board is in support of this article." I, I, I am not going to do that on Monday. I will not support this article on Monday. I will say the same thing before the body on Monday that I'm saying here tonight. I don't think it's good governance for us to rush anything, especially creation of a committee that's going to serve a really, really important process.
That would give it a lot more credibility also. I mean, if we just wait a year, but not discontinue it.
So...
Keep giving us all a chance to think about it.
Right.
I don't see what it hurts.
So I would have preferred that process, I would have preferred that process as well, which would have been under the Planning Board, actually, again, something that it talks about in the statute, is that, that we have the right to extend the implementation time process, the timeframe, which we actually didn't have input in. I didn't realize that last year, when it was being extended additional year, that that should have been something that the Planning Board voted on, and we should have put that article forth. I, the question is, I don't know if it's out of scope, that we, because extending it for one year, if that language could be added somehow, but I, I think, I think it's, unfortunately, I, I don't think we can make that recommendation at this point. It would have to be a new article, to extend, that, the Implementation Committee.
For the Planning Board to extend, or for anyone to extend?
It would be out of scope of what this article is, because we would be acting, we, we...
Right.
There is not a, another article in the warrant on extending it, so.
So if that were the case, that would be really unfortunate. Because if that is the case, that means that by either a yes or a no vote, this committee either, either is creating, or the MPIC goes away. That's a shame. That's the choice that we might have, if what you're saying is in effect.
And that's why I'm thinking, if we add this language, solidifying what is statutorily the responsibility of the Planning Board, and as we go forward, maybe we look to forward to additional amendments, that the, that the Planning Board would seek to, to bring to a new article for next...
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't, I wasn't, I wasn't aware that, that there was this thought of this simple amendment.
I know, and I'm sorry.
It's okay.
So can I just point out that the first two items on the charge?
That's what I was saying. I just went through what you were saying. Had, had, had I recognized that this is likely what's going to happen, I would have, I would have probably done a more, you know, critical review of the article as it's prepared, because I'm probably not satisfied with one change, if we, if that's our choice. I, honestly, I really need to think about it, but I, I, I'm not, I'm not, this is not where I want to be. I feel like I'm backed into a corner now.
So, so Sean, just for a moment, the charge, number one, and number two are already on the books for this committee, the Implementation Committee. So, the difference is number three, and having it be a standing committee.
It's a bigger, it's a bigger committee.
It's a bigger committee, because the original master plan committee, I think, was maybe 14-ish people. And we felt, if there were going to be some recommendations of updates, that it might need or benefit from having more people, but we also felt as if having that many people would be difficult to get scheduling done. And we talked with Nick about that, and sort of settled on the nine. And you see that, under the membership, we did expand a little bit on, and wanting to make sure that, well, a couple of things. People didn't think the joint appointments worked well. They felt as if it's better to have Select Board and Planning Board make their own appointments, and then to add as a third body, and generally, one that does appointments is the moderator. But the other thing is that those appointing bodies look for geographic distribution, just so that we're not focused, have people who are focused on one part of town. So I'll just, those were a couple of things that were a little different, but.
There are, it is more than that. I mean, the, the criteria to be a member has been expanded. It, it certainly, I'm not, I don't, I'm not comparing word for word, but it seems, it seems to me that there's expanded criteria to be the member. I'm not, and I don't, I, it doesn't matter to me who the individual is that appoints three members. I don't believe any individual in town, I don't believe you as the chair should appoint three members, I don't believe the chair of the Select Board should appoint three members, and I don't believe the town moderator should appoint three members. I like the idea of five people selecting three people, and I like the idea of five Select Board members selecting three people. I don't like the idea of the moderator, at any point in Milton's time, selecting three people. I think the collaborative effort of a group of people identifying who should be on it is a better, a way of appointing people. There's, it's, there's more than just a couple of things in here. I, I'd like this to be, I'd like this article to have been created, you know, by a collaborative effort of us and Cheryl's committee, the MPIC committee. That would have been a much better process.
So the moderator does appoint all the warrant committee, the Conservation Commission, I believe, the CBA, et cetera.
The Select Board does Conservation.
Okay, sorry about that one. All right, just one thing on here. The, the reason we expanded the expertise, originally it was planning, architecture, economic development, landscape architecture, real estate, and something called other relevant fields, is that there's a lot in the master plan that's outside of those targeted fields. And so, the committee felt that having folks who had other expertise could, would be beneficial to the work of the committee. And, and that expertise could help inform the recommendations. So, and, you know, as far as, you know, an appointing body, there's, these are the bodies that generally appoint, the, appoint committees. It's either, mostly the Select Board and the town moderator. And this Planning Board only has, I think, this committee as one that it appoints to. And I just want to go back to, on the, the question of reporting back. You should recall that I have said that I'd be happy to come and report to, to this committee, to this board, rather. I've requested that committee reports be put on the agenda, and we all know that the, I don't control the agenda and committee reports on when they're done. And so, I, I have, in the, always been available to provide that when it's on the agenda. So I just want to be clear about that.
Do you guys keep minutes? Do you guys take minutes of your meetings?
Yes.
Good.
Having them be posted on the website is another challenge, because...
We could see those, I mean, those could be some of the reports.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have...
How do you see, and I agree that we can, we can definitely put that on, you know, our agenda, if this does...
Well, I think what we agreed upon in the last meeting, I just interrupted you, so go ahead and finish what you're saying.
No, that's right. Go ahead. No, no, because I, yeah.
We're going to make it a standing. So, I don't have the agenda here a moment ago, but we get past administrative, and whatever the agenda is, that should be a standing component of our agenda, we talked about, and so...
Any reports?
Yeah, exactly, committee reports. So, you know, in the administrative items, I think that's where it goes. Meeting minutes, future meeting dates, staff update, committee reports, from, from anybody that's a member of the Planning Board, that is a member of a committee. And that'll, that way we'll be insured that the committee representative has, has, yeah. But, you know, and, and I, I sincerely feel bad for you, because it seems to me, you have chaired the committee for like, a forever time. There's a tremendous burden.
Would you like to be the next one?
No, I don't. No, I don't. No, but, 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 you know...
You want to extend it? You want to be the next one?
No, I absolutely don't.
Are you stepping down?
But I do think volunteerism is important, you know, and, and rotating is important.
It is important.
Right? So, nobody should have to do it for 10 years.
The committee talked about having maybe one or two people who might bring some continuity across, but that having new people on would, would be beneficial. And that's why we tried to be as thorough as possible in, in the report itself, is that, you know, it would be passed on. Correct. I, I did not have an intention of continuing on...
I didn't think so.
To chair it. I feel like, you know, it's, it's been...
A long time.
And it's a lot to, you know, every new member who comes on, so it's really a lot to get your head around.
Yeah.
And so, I mentioned that earlier, about all the strategies and where they tie into. It is a lot. And how you even, like, when we started the committee, how do you even begin? You know, where do you start? And we started with that tracking sheet, and assigning committee members, certain aspects of it, for follow-up. So, you know, you would, some, you know, I would bring back what the work was here. You know, we were, there were a lot of things that this board was working on, like, we weren't sitting here not doing anything, so there, in terms of the things that are still left to do, obviously.
We've actually accomplished quite a bit that's in the master plan.
But other members were charged with reaching out to, you know, Parks and Rec, for example, or to, you know, town departments, you know, DPW, or Conservation Commission, and so forth. Having been, this board's representative to the CPC, I'm quite familiar with the projects the last few years. So we didn't have to add somebody to do that. But the turnover on the committee is actually, in 10 years, been fairly low. You know, we've had different people from the Select Board, and, but we've had two members who have been there the whole time, and they were also on the Master Plan Committee itself. So our, the three of us have brought... So our, the three of us have brought a lot of continuity, but the three of us are ready, you know, for someone else. But having.
And they were like, I tried to get on it before I ran for select, for planning board. And there were like eight people that were running. So it was pretty, it was pretty popular. People wanted to be on that board.
We've never had, well, we've had a vacancy now because we were, were to end, you know, and somebody coming in. Actually, I felt also, you know, like the newest select board representative has had a bit of, you know, catching up, but focused a bit on the things that the select board's more in charge of. But.
You raise a, you know, I, I actually think, you know, a variety of point of view is probably helpful. But, you know, if, if there isn't enough turnover, you're not gonna get much variety in, in, in. You know, again, these are great conversations to have as a group. I'd love to have this as a group and say, how do people feel about term limits? You know, is there a limit to the number of years that the town would want somebody to serve in that committee? May, maybe the limit's five years, maybe it's 10 years, maybe it's three years. But, you know, they're really good, those, I think we could create, you know, really good structure to a committee if we had a process where we could discuss this stuff together.
So the appointments are, as you know, one year currently. And we, there were people in our committee who thought maybe we should consider a three-year appointment like some other committees. And other members of the committee felt it would be harder to get people to commit.
Sure.
And, you know, it's really, if new members, you know, are interested in, in coming in, there, there haven't been that many vacancies, but when there have been vacancies, you know, the process was to reach out to the select board's office to see if somebody had filled out the form, to see if they were, you know, which committees they were interested in. And we would have one or two. When we had more was when we added two seats. And that was because we were five and it was a lot of work for five. And so committee members actually had suggested to me, why don't we add a couple of seats? This was one, it was actually the select board member at the time who made that suggestion. So that we could help get, advance the work further. And we did have seven for a while. And then because we were coming closer to the end, I think maybe folks didn't feel as if it was something to come into at the end.
To appoint somebody, Dan, to the report, yeah.
Well, I think that, that the MPIC holds, you know, wields a lot of influence. And it's good, but I also agree that it's, it's, it's gonna be fluid, it's gonna be constantly added to and changed. So I think taking a year to think about it and, and having the planning board's input on, I guess, the charge would be a good thing personally. I mean, I can't agree more with Sean.
I'm not going to speak for the other committee members, but I know some members have felt it's time. So you may have a whole new committee for that one year extension.
Cool, good.
So I've kind of followed MPIC for a while now. And, you know, I've said this for this committee and in other committees. I'm not a huge fan of the town of Milton having like 70, 80.
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one committees that are appointed. And we touched briefly on this last time. And I sort of have felt like MPIC has been sort of like a committee that's running parallel to the planning board. And things are being recommended and moving through the process without input from the planning board. And, you know, to your point, Meredith, that last year the planning board didn't have any input on the extension of time. This year, the planning board didn't have any extension of time. But maybe, you know, I see a pattern forming that I'm not really excited to see. Government should be slow and steady. And I know we've had a lot of vacancies at town hall and things, and people have come and gone and things have been overlooked and, you know, it's, it's unfortunate that that has happened. So if a change of this committee was going to be made, you know, it should've come to the planning board. The qualifications of the members should've come to the planning board. A master plan should change depending on what's going on in town. And a lot has gone on in town in the last 10 years. If you look at all the 40Bs and the other developments that have been approved. You know, we always focus on housing, but there's a lot of units coming to town. And, you know, maybe, and, you know, people might not like what I have to say, but, you know, maybe the focus shouldn't be housing. Maybe we need to wait and see what these new developments coming, what the impact of those units will have on our town before we're moving into creating more housing. You know, it took me, you know, 25 minutes to get here. And, you know, we have a big change on Randolph Ave, which I am a supporter of. It's much safer. I feel better for my family and my employees. But it adds time and adding all these new units are going to impact, you know, our traffic. I would think a master plan should focus on traffic mitigation. So I am.
It's a big part of the plan.
You know, and sustainability, you know, is, is important. But, you know, at the state level, that whole sustainability is a moving target. You know, my understanding is it might even be, you know, changed because it's not a realistic goal. But, so we, you know, we do have to be flexible. And, you know, and in increasing, to Sean's point, the, the number of members, you know, I think that's all something that we should have been part of. And I understand the goal of what you're trying to achieve, Meredith, but I also am just as frustrated with the process. And, and it is unfortunate that MPIC was notified late in the, in the season, in the year. So we are kind of stuck. And I'm not really sure what to do about it, really. Those are just my thoughts that I, I don't, if, if a, if a new committee was going to be created, I do wish that we would have been included in the whole process.
Understanding processes disappointments. I, I would ask you to think about the content. And, you know, what, I guess what the, you know, in, in discussions with the committee, the idea was, you know, make it a standing committee instead of a, a committee that has a finite end. Then it went from that, what, with the targeted updates that we had already been suggested last year that we provide.
Annual.
Sorry?
It says annual updates here, so it's not semi-annual the way it happened.
So we applied a few things here based on what we had learned over the years and what we felt would make the committee better. Not about trying to take anything from the planning board. You know, we, in the very beginning of this committee, there was some fluidity between the planning board and the MPIC. Funds were kind of mingled. It was like, MPIC, you have a little bit more money left. Can you put that towards this planning board goal or? And you saw that even here where we were asked to provide matching funds for certain things that, you know, the planning department, you know, got a grant. So there, there was a lot of fluidity and, you know.
Collaboration.
And collaboration. Of late, some of the initiatives have been a little different because it was the library trustees who came to the committee or it was the Partnership for Healthy Milton who came to the committee. And we tried to help them because it was in the master plan to help advance certain goals. And so, you know, it wasn't purely planning board work. So we, we, you know, targeted some attention to things that weren't purely planning board work because, and again, I was kind of looking through the responsible parties that was set up in the, the plan itself. And if you look in the appendix and the spreadsheets, you'll see all the responsible parties. I pulled it up on the screen at the last meeting. There are a lot of different parties. And so in the beginning, it was more work with the planning board. Later, it was work with others. But it's, you know, it wasn't, I mean, we reached out to, to various groups to see if they were making progress and how it could help. But some people, as they found out about the committee and that there was funds available, came to us because they saw that we could, you know, help them with advancing something that they thought was important in the plan. So that's why I say it's not purely planning board, you know, there's, there's a lot that's not. And those other responsible parties, you know, if, it, one of the things that we found in the very beginning is they may not have even been known that they were targeted as a responsible party for something. So that initial outreach was, hey, are you familiar that we passed this plan? Are you, do you know that there's things in it that you're responsible for? And in some case it was, oh, really? You know, that they didn't know. So the, that's what I said, it's very multifaceted. And we're talking about six or seven people who are volunteers, you know, serving on a committee. We were asked, I think, to meet like once a year or twice a year. We met at least monthly and sometimes more. We held public forums. We engaged consultants, you know. I spoke at the select board meeting two nights ago and Richard Wells, who's been advancing the work at Milton Landing, you know, spoke about our early conversations there, which were probably like eight years ago at least. Because they've been working on advancing the, the recommendations that came out of our work. So I really would just go back to, yes, it would've been better for all of us to have talked about this sooner. It's also something, what's the merit in the actual work and the merit in what's in there?
I would've been happy to have called a meeting had I known this, because I, I thought, I, cuz I read in the Milton Times, you know, it was, it was down to the deadline and that it was going to print, the warrant was going to print. So I thought, well, this won't happen at this meeting, but I certainly would've called a meeting and said, let's, let's get on the same, you know, on the same page with this. But again, I feel like we are where we are. And one thing I said to Liz, you know, in one of our initial conversations, I feel like our director of planning is, these are all spokes of a wheel, but it should all be centralized through Liz, through our director of planning and community development.
Remember, we had no planning department in August.
So that's, again, part of the reason why maybe this should not have been, we should've had.
Just extended for a year and then let's revisit it.
Town planner on board, you know, and had a chance to just ask the questions. Because a lot of what I had when I spoke to Liz is, I have questions on the process and how this is actually gonna work because are there recommendations that will actually be brought to the planning board? And I don't know how you see with, you know, an annual, how recommendations, and again, we'll have a standing committee. But, you know, for the example of, you know, I think a couple of times since I've been on the board, MPIC was moving forward with an East Milton overlay, you know, looking at consultants. And I had to say to Tim, this is work that I really think the planning board should, should be doing. And, and you were fine with that. And same with Milton Village at the very end and the design guidelines. This is work that I think we want to have processed and handled it from, by the planning board. So I guess that's where I think what you're saying is you're seeing things running parallel. We want to make sure, I just want to make sure that communication and that this is, it's coming through before things, you know, before MIPC's hire consultants, that maybe that recommendation should've come to the planning board. And that we should either collaborate with consultants or maybe it's work that we don't need, that we would say, great, go run with it, you know. But having that level of communication, I think, through Liz is important.
Like I said too, it, it's the other boards and committees that have a responsibility to. So for example, you know, former planning director said, we've got this opportunity, we need matching funds. Do you think the committee would, would be supportive of using matching funds? And by the way, we needed a decision by whatever date it was and we could, you know, we happened to have a meeting before the planning board had a meeting and otherwise we were gonna lose it to grant opportunity. I said, sure, I can get that on our agenda. So, you know, it's, this is where, you know, we have had challenges because we've had, you know, loss of staff. We've had, you know, some of the continuity over time. So, you know, I don't, I take responsibility for the work of our committee and timeframes in which we've delivered. We'll say that we've done the best that we can as a volunteer group.
And it's great.
And we're making our recommendations and, and I appreciate that you feel like you should've been more engaged with it. But I just ask you to think about whether that this is actually worth doing to continue to do this. I think this particular committee is, feels like we've reached our endpoint, honestly. And so I, I, I think if you are thinking of extending for one year, you're going to be starting with a new committee anyway. So I, or at least the majority new committee. So I, I do think that outside of the process, to think about the merit of it. I know you, you may not be able to, Sean, but.
No one's beating you up on the work. I think it's a good thing.
Again, I, I don't, I don't want you to.
I'm talking about the merit of the recommendation. That's not the merit of the, of the work.
The, I, I value the process. I, you're an architect. You design. Part of being successful.
Project management.
You do that too. But part of the success of what you achieve in design is the process you go through, right? I feel the same way about this. The success of creating this committee and what the committee's gonna do for the town, as I've said, in perpetuity. Because, you know, it, it likely is gonna stay forever. As long as there's a master plan, this committee will have a purpose. So again, I, I believe that the best way to do that in per, if it's gonna be here for in perpetuity is to do it together. Do it together. Let's talk about it. And, and let's, let's, let's dig into it. This was brought together in probably less than 60 days, you know, and, and so. And I want to go back to a point that you made because I, I think you, you kind of said, I would've called a meeting. You didn't miss anything. This is my perspective. Unless you knew that there was an idea that a committee was gonna be proposed to continue on. Because the only thing we could've expected was the completion of the charge, which is at the end of 10 years, this would've been 11, said committee shall report to the planning board, the select board, the board of selectmen in the town meeting its recommendation as to whether the master plan shall be updated under the Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 41, Section 81D. We all expected the 11 years was enough and this was the conclusion of the 11-year effort. There was no reason to call a meeting. No reason to call a meeting. Unless you had any knowledge that MPIC wanted to, to convert the committee to a different committee. So I don't think you missed anything. You, you blame yourself often and I don't think you should for that.
Well, I, I didn't, you know, obviously. Again, you know, maybe speak to the committee, see if there, there would be that opportunity to have a dialogue.
I, I think you're right that it's gonna be out of scope unless you spoke, if you've spoken to the moderator about that, then I don't know what the committee's responding to.
If it would be possible to send it back for further study.
The committee's disbanded at the end of October the way it is right now. I mean, we've, tomorrow's, we thought we already had our last meeting, but tomorrow will be our last meeting.
Can you call a meeting between now and the end of October and propose it to them?
No, but I was gonna, what I was gonna say is if it was sent back, if it was mutually agreed to send it back for further study, that would allow us to have that meeting and establish this committee at spring, at the annual town meeting in the spring. So not waiting a full year.
Thank you.
We wouldn't, there would be a time lapse, but we would be creating. We wouldn't, there would be a time lapse, but we would be creating a new committee together and have it ready for spring town meeting.
I, I think, I, I don't think there is a method of sending it back, because there, the extension last year was for one year. So it's the end of October. So the committee goes away. It does not, there's not a sending it back. So the choices are continuing it or have it go away. Continuing it as this.
It would go away for six months, and then, and then if what Meredith is saying is possible, then by the next town meeting, it would come back again. I mean, that's, that's, that's kind of like the most upfront way to do it, I think.
I also-
I don't even think we can continue it as an MPIC committee, because I think that's out of scope. But that might be a question for town council.
I also see value in having Liz be a participant in this. You know, I mean, this, we're all volunteers. Her responsibility Monday to Friday, and probably Saturday and Sunday, you know, is to be our leader of community and planning.
Planning and-
Planning and community development. But, you know, I think it's important, if we're going to create a committee that is going to be proposing, you know, suggestions, ideas, you know, to the planning board and also to Liz. Allow Liz to be part of it, too. She just arrived.
Yeah. Yeah. And, you know, really thinking about term limits. I mean, I've heard the selectmen say that they want to bring in new people, get new ideas, you know, you've, you've brought it up. But when you look at some of the committees, people have been on the committees for like 30 years. And to me, that is a very long time, you know, even, especially being appointed. It's different when you're elected, because the residents of the town, you know, have a say if they like what you're doing and you should be there for 20 years. But an appointed committee is different.
So it is one-year term, it is one-year terms?
Yeah, but they still get, even if-
Reappointed.
They get reappointed, even if other people submit an application to go on a board. Their application isn't always taken, because they give preference to the, the members who have been there long-term. And they always say it's for continuity, which I do get that. But if there is opportunity for new people, I think that's important. And I do think, especially for master plan, I think having residents in different parts of the town is really the most important thing, because we are talking about economic development. And there might be, you know, one section of town are like, we don't want any businesses here. But there might be another town, a section of town is like, yeah, bring it on, we want it. So I think that should be the number one.
So if you, well, you'll notice if, if you get to read through the report, there is, I think, a couple of places that we touch on that people don't feel like they have an opportunity to participate in town government. Equally, maybe they're new residents, not born here. A lot of people like to talk about being born here.
I think that's changing.
Well, no, I applied, I, before I was on planning board, I applied to the shade tree committee, and I was not appointed. And I had the qualifications, and I was a lifetime resident. So I know some people say, oh, the lifetime residents get preference. I never got preference.
I'm just saying, it's something that needs to be, the, the report indicates also that it's something that needs to be worked on, that the town needs to work on being more inclusive with a broader sort of perspectives. So I don't disagree with you on that, that there's, that, you know, there should be opportunities for people to participate. And it's, you know, it's one of the reasons why all of us that have served on this particular committee for a long time have said, it's time for new folks. And we wanted to impart or, you know, leave behind, you know, what, what we've seen after our time on the committee. And let the new folks, you know, take that and, and do what they may. And again, it's, it's recommendations, because the, you know, the planning board has to make the changes.
So I think just for the, for being at 8:20, our conversation is, this was a thought, a recommend, you know, something that I thought would, would, at least for now, if this does go forward, the language change just solidifies the fact that what, what statute, 40, Chapter 40, Section 81D, states as far as who's responsible and ultimately who has to, the majority of the vote that would have to go through and changes for the master plan. Having said that, I think we all have different perspectives. I think Cheryl has heard, and everyone's different perspectives. I know it's a brief meeting tomorrow, so I would trust that you could just share that I think we, we can agree to-
Well, do you, do you intend to put this amendment forward? I mean, this, or not?
If this goes, if this article goes forward, I would at least add that language. I would at least request that that language be asked, and maybe that's our motion, that we would request that it's sent back for further study. But if it is not sent back for further study-
Just so we can be-
Yeah.
Yeah, just so we can accomplish before town meeting what can be accomplished, so we're not trying to do this on the floor.
Right.
Would you, as our representative of the planning board, talk to Nick tomorrow and ask him what is possible and what's not possible? With respect to this article? I'd like, you know, I'm not a supporter of this article, even if we make the amendment that you suggested earlier.
Right, I understand.
So, but I really would like to understand what can be done, you know? Is there, is there no possible way that MPIC can continue?
Can be extended for a year.
Yeah. Is it, is our only possibility that this committee ends the end of October, and we bring an article before town meeting next spring to create the new committee? I'd just like to understand what that is. So at least we're, as we're all arriving at town meeting on Monday, understanding, you know, what limitations we are, we have in terms of that.
And would we ever, we can't expand an article. We can always, you know-
Reduce it.
Reduce it. And you said this is in perpetuity. Would you ever say this is until May town meeting?
That's what I was also thinking, if it could be-
I don't know.
Created for a shorter term.
I think that these are all conversations. These are all questions that, you know, Nick may be able to answer, hopefully.
That's actually something, Maggie, I was, I was thinking, maybe that's a possibility of how we could do this, because we could give this a finite term, so we would have a chance to really create together.
I don't think-
And I don't think it would be terribly different from this, but-
I'm probably not a proponent of, of doing that. You know, we're creating a bylaw that's going to last for, what, six months, seven months? You know, and then, and it's going to get complicated to change it. I, I honestly don't think we're going to lose a lot with, we may give everybody a break, you know, that probably earned and deserve a break, the MPIC members, but I don't think we're going to lose a lot in whatever that period of time is, from October until when we can put another article before.
Yeah, the other thing I meant, in the warrant committee's comment, it says, as such, there's a need to create a new committee. So again, I, you know, a little disappointed that, you know, who determined, what member of the warrant committee or members determined that there was a need to create a new committee? And how come they didn't reach out to us? So when they, when they were discussing this, but, so that's, you know, and again, it went by fast. It went by fast.
Maybe we would ask, so maybe Liz, you could, would you be able to talk to Nick to see tomorrow morning?
Sure.
What is, what is possible to allow this opportunity if, if we were not to move this, or, you know, to afford us time to have some input into, into what was created here?
Okay.
Or, or extend, and at least extend MPIC, because I think we all are, we, I think we all agree that having something to keep moving forward on the master plan is, would be our intent.
Yeah, the intent is not for MPIC to go away. It's just to have a more collaborative approach to creating the new MPIC, too, or whatever we're calling it.
If it's possible to extend it for another year, I just don't see, I agree with what Cheryl said. I don't know, within the function of town meeting and, and articles, I don't know how we can do it, you know? I don't. But maybe there's a way.
I, I don't see it. So I've been on the work, I mean, I've been a town meeting member-
That's what I don't see it either.
Before, what, 14 or 15 years? I just don't, having served on the warrant committee for four years before this board, I just, I don't see the mechanism for it, but I think it's really, that's more than Nick. It's maybe a conversation for the moderator, but-
We have the experience with our own, remember our article, our, was it our site plan approval? And we were trying to make six simple changes, and we couldn't accomplish that at a town meeting. I envisioned if we tried that kind of discussion again on Monday, it's just going to be, it's going to be so hard. And it's not going to be an article that, you know, no article should be amended to a great extent in town meeting. That's, that's just an opinion I have, but.
Well, to, I mean, town meeting may, or may not vote to support the article, so I guess, I think what Meredith was asking is whether you'd want to, if they choose to support it, would you want this amendment in it for that, in that event?
So that's my concern, is if we make the change, do town meeting members then think, oh, the planning board supports it?
Right.
And they vote to pass it? Because the planning board is supportive of the article, because we supported this I understand it makes it better.
I think we can make it clear, I think we could make that point, that we have concerns that we, that this has not been a collaborative process.
I think town meeting would want to know what you would do differently than what's in the article. And I haven't heard yet what you would do differently, except maybe you wouldn't have the moderator appoint some. But I haven't heard anything else that's, that's different, other than it would be a process in which people would participate in.
Well, again-
So town meeting, they ask board what they, what they're thinking.
Whether it should be in perpetuity, I think, yeah.
Just give us six months to think about it, would be nice. Above board, just so we can all talk about it.
Yeah, because I think we have not really had a chance to talk about it.
Oh, I'm just anticipating.
What other towns are doing, you know, what?
Have Liz's participation in it. You know, I mean, we've talked about plenty of things here tonight, Cheryl. I don't think it's fair to say that I haven't heard anything, other than nine members and three being appointed by the moderator. You know, we've talked about the geographic importance of all parts of the town. We talked about this is a pretty expansive criteria, building construction, so there's no way I'm getting into it, because building construction's not a criteria, so I'm out, unless I'm a planning board member that comes in. So, you know, we haven't really been a participant in it. I'd like to, I'd like to have a fixed date for when reports are due. Reporting annually is great, but let's decide when the article's created, what date does a report do? Every committee then can drive towards that date. That's not in there. There's plenty of things that we could improve this article with, if we had enough time to think about it and to do it, you know, and I'd like to do it in a collaborative way, you know?
So the article's submitted by the, the committee, and so you can choose not to support the article. And that's what, you can, if you're asked your recommendation, or you choose to speak at town meeting, that's the way you could do it. I don't see how the committee can withdraw the article, then we're withdrawing our report. So, you know, we have to, we're mandated to report, and so we're going to do the report. I guess somebody could move to strike the rest of it.
Can I ask a question?
I don't see a mechanism for continuing it for another year.
Well, it doesn't, you didn't have to have an article to have a report.
Yes, Nick said we did.
Why?
Because there's no, when we have the annual town meeting, there's a article that allows for the delivery of reports. But there's, there was no such article for this fall. Look, I'm not the expert. I'm going by what the town administrator told me, is that we needed an article that at least did that. And so when we met on August 3rd, we discussed that that's our minimum. We could consider whether there was anything else we wanted to include in the article. And whether there, there was a lot of discussion about the remaining concern about a plan not sitting on a shelf, about there being a continuing monitoring of the implementation. There were members who felt as if having an extension every year was not the best way to do it. Members suggested it should be standing. And so it was a, you know, six-person discussion about different ideas that everyone had. And this is-
Beginning of August.
In August, but we've been talking about our recommendations for over a year.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just feeling like if the idea of continuing the committee started in the beginning of August, we could have had a conversation about it before our last planning board meeting, but.
So it went from passing an article to give a report, to passing an article to keep your committee going in perpetuity? Is that what I just heard?
To create a new committee.
You know, I feel like we just spent like an hour and a half on this tonight, an hour and a half on this the last time.
Is that what happened?
And I've explained to you all, I think, as many times, no, we're just rehashing the same things. I don't think it's productive any longer.
Yeah, so I, just one, so, and this is a question for Nick. This has been a requirement of MPIC for 10 years to do a report. And during those 10 years, MPIC didn't have an article, yet they submitted a report.
It was part of the reports that were under that blanket article in the annual town meeting.
So that's why, that's my confusion, is why previously up until this point, we didn't, MPIC did not need an article.
Because this is a special town meeting, in that they don't, he said that they didn't have that standing article, which allows for the reports of the committees, like they have at the annual town meeting in May. I was just under the assumption initially that that's what we were working towards, and we would just deliver the report. But the, the report is also the recommendations, and the committees really felt that the recommendation, that this should be the recommendation. I'm speaking on behalf of the committee. I am not speaking on behalf of myself as one person. There was, I can tell you, there was a lot of discussion about this, and you can watch, you can go back and watch the tapes. I mean, there's tapes of our meetings. We, I thought, we have a pretty good set of minutes for all of our meetings, that they've all been submitted to Nick, before that, to Cheyenne, and so.
And the committee was originally established at the, at the 2014 October special town meeting, so that's why the time, that's why the timing doesn't sync up for the annual.
Right. Okay, so, let's, let's, if we're going to have a vote, or a request that we, we vote to request that Liz would speak to Nick Milano tomorrow morning regarding, is it possible, would it be possible to extend MPIC's current, the committee currently for, extend for another year, in order to add time to collaborate?
Within the scope of this article?
It would, that would somehow would have to be incorporated on that.
Couldn't have a new article any longer, so it would have to be within the scope of this.
Have to be within the scope of this, if that's possible.
Okay.
Or-
Or the idea that they could continue in some fashion from now until a new article could be brought forward in the spring?
Yeah.
What could, what could that look like, if they could continue in some fashion?
Yeah.
And what's the penalty of not giving a report?
Seems to be none.
What's more harmful, not giving a report, or creating a committee that is not well-baked? So I would think B is more harmful.
I would take offense to calling it not baked. I think the committee feels it is baked, and that we spent a lot of time putting and think, and thought into putting it together. So whether you think that you should have been a part of the process is one thing. To call it half-baked, I take offense to.
Not baked with the planning board.
All right. So could we continue that and say, in the event that that is not possible, would people be open to supporting that language change? If this is going to go forward to town meeting? It, it doesn't change with the statute. It, it doesn't change what the statute says, so whether that language is put in or not, the statute is what the statute is. To me, it just, it made it, it makes it more clear for future planning boards and future master plan committees to understand.
But when we go through our recodification process to align with state statute, that might get fixed in this.
Well, possibly, I think we'd have to add that language. But we don't have to add that language, MPIC can add that language.
What language?
The, for the, the planning board, recommendations to the planning board. Because it's your article, so technically you don't, you don't need for us to vote on that. So if, if our, if we want to not put, vote on that language, MPIC and the warrant committee could do that together. With support of the select board.
I think that would eliminate the confusion that Maggie suggested earlier.
Okay.
Because, well, it doesn't, changing that language doesn't represent my point of view as a member of the planning board, so I'm not gonna support that, but, but.
And I'm fine with that, that's why I didn't, I made it clear when I was talking to Liz and to. Well, it went through Liz, but the language change.
Let me restate myself, because I don't think I stated myself properly. I think the language is fine, but I have bigger issues than the language.
I get it, I totally get it.
I disagree with your language.
So that is something, if it does, if it's not pulled back for further study, if it can't, if MPIC can't continue for another year, and this does end up going to the floor, it's something that MPIC can, and the warrant committee can add that language. If they choose to not hold it for further study.
We could make a friendly amendment, is that possible, or is it, no?
We could on the, on the floor, but I think they rather have everything in advance. There's a meeting at 2:30 tomorrow to go over where everything is, any changes, so. So I just would, then that can be our motion, you know, we can see if that's a possibility, and then see if that's acceptable to, to MPIC.
Yeah, I mean, really, the direction here is dependent on what Nick informs Liz can and can't be done.
Yeah. All right, so I don't know if we need a formal vote on that, but.
I don't think so.
I don't think that, we, we've just asked Liz to make that request, so, and you can let me know, all right? So I think we can move on at this point, because we have sort of gone around with this quite a bit, so. So the next thing on our agenda, we have before. Oh, site plan review, yeah, the draft, the rules and regulations discussion, Liz, you would.
Yeah, I, I think, so I, I shared this document with, with the board probably about a week ago. You know, it was one of the first things that Nick had asked me to follow up on, was to see sort of what our initial, what our existing forms and checklists, et cetera, look like, and how we can, you know, make them conform to the new, to the new site plan review bylaw that was just adopted. So it's, you know, it's 17 pages, but honestly, it's, it's a lot of detail in terms of the process. Those couple pages have a lot of information about just how you file your application, which I personally find very helpful, because, especially if you've got different people that are gonna be touching certain parts of this thing, whether it's an admin, or people in different town departments, or whatnot. So that, I think, is useful, but it's, this is a early draft, so please, you know, like, no, no problem with any, any, any feedback or any, anything like that. Article two is really simple, it just is, I just copied and pasted out the, the new, the new language in the bylaw for the various items that need to be included in the application. The third element is the application form, which isn't very good. It didn't, it didn't, it didn't translate very well, so I'm probably gonna look at the existing form and just kind of maybe play with that a little bit more. And then there's a couple of pages that are probably somewhat duplicate a little bit. Like this table of contents might duplicate, you know, some stuff that you're gonna get on the title page of a plan anyway. It kind of depends, you know, sometimes you may not have like a full, like a full-on, you know.
Depending on the project, because we get all different sized projects, so the different scale could be something.
Exactly, right, so, so things like that, so, so it's all just kind of, you know, again, this is a, this is an early draft, although I'm pretty sure stuff's gonna start coming in the door, so we definitely gotta get, get, get going. I have a meeting, the last item is the, the fees and, and the review fees. I have a meeting next week with the, the former town engineer who's now the DPW director, Marina Fernandez. We've had a really early conversation about how the process works here in town, in terms of like the peer review and whatnot, so. So I think I shared this with her, so we're gonna talk about this a little bit. You know, ideally, I'd like to have, you know, five or six firms, like, that are already pre-vetted, and we can just, you know, pick up the phone and, and we have a relationship where we can just kind of get stuff, get stuff out to them quickly. The timeframes in the site plan review process are pretty tight. I think it's like, stuff has to get in front of you guys within like 30 days or something, or no less than 30 days, and then has to be turned around in 75 days, so, you know, that's pretty quick. So, you know, some, like you said, some of these things are gonna be pretty simple and straightforward, and some of these things are gonna be much more, you know, complex.
And we did put language in to allow for an extension if we do need peer review, because we do have like the memory care on Highland Street project, that was, there was a lot of peer review consultants that we needed.
Yes.
That we were waiting on them, you know, especially if they would go back and they would make changes.
Okay.
So we did, but we, we also wanted to keep it tight, if it was something that was a really simple, straightforward parking situation, or something, loading zones, or, you know, simple.
Okay, all right.
Speaking of the memory care, when I was looking at the, that section on the project review fees.
Yeah.
I think it's worth seeing how much was spent there on peer review. And then I think on the, the Goddard School, was it, or the, we had some peer review.
Okay.
On the, and I think we had peer review on 440 Granite Ave, which is residential. So it just would, yeah, so it would be helpful to kind of see how much was spent.
Yep, yep.
Those, I don't know that any of those were less than 10,000 square feet, though, so maybe, I'm not sure what, like, where we would have an example of that one. And just one thing, in the dimension form, dimensional form, I think it would be helpful to have building height in stories and in feet, not just one category. And then on ratio of total floor area to lot area, we spend a lot of time on the MBTA communities, only talking about the actual, the term floor area ratio, so FAR. So I think we should probably, that's a requirement in that zoning, so I think if we are consistent with our language.
Yeah.
This is one of the things that we're not consistent about in our base bylaw, is any definitions, they all vary, heights even. The definition of height varies across different sections of the bylaw.
Right.
Which is one of the things that you'll uncover, which doesn't make any sense, but how it's measured. And then I know.
Just, just, just a language, just language.
Well, I just felt like in that table, we should just say the floor area ratio, yeah. And then, because if we're getting these underneath, under that MBTA community zoning, it will be consistent with the zoning.
Okay.
And then there's.
But not necessarily the other zones.
Not necessarily the other sections, right, because we don't have, honestly.
Yeah, it's pretty.
We have floor area ratio requirements in our underlying zoning. Then you read along later, and you say they don't apply to single families. And so that's why you'll see some really big houses on some what look like very small lots. But if you have a different kind of a building on that, then you do, are subject to it. The other thing is the submission requirements, I didn't, I saw where there's a lot of paper, and then that you can look at it, once you get the eight copies, you can look at it and decide that it's incomplete. And then all those eight copies are wasted. So I'm, I'm thinking that you should be able to look at it first in PDF formats.
Or one single.
Or one set for you.
One set printed, because I think that is.
Department to review to see if it's complete.
Yeah, I think the department should have one copy.
Yeah, that it's complete, then, then, like, I, we have, and for, over my tenure here, transitioned from getting full-size plans to getting PDFs and only plans on request.
Okay.
I usually request a plan, because I do like to.
To roll it out.
To see out the details, some of them are really complicated.
But for example, most of us don't have the technical expertise to read the full stormwater report.
Right.
On paper form.
Right.
And then you'll, we'll get these full sets of drawings at full scale, what, three or four revision sets?
Yeah.
So.
That's not necessary.
Yeah, I, I, I need, I, I, I don't know whether or not like the fire chief likes, likes paper, and I don't know if the.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what I mean, like, so I'm still trying to kind of figure that out. And so this was kind of like an in-between, but I, but I, but I totally hear you, I, I, less paper, the better. So, and, and like even tonight, like, I was like, oh gosh, are they expecting like a, me to like make a copy of this packet? Like, I don't know, so I'm, I'm still trying to kind of figure some of that out, but my, I'm in the same, I am the same mindset, the less paper, the better. But if we can get the, a couple of full-size sets, especially if people like them, I just don't know who, who wants, who wants them. I actually personally would like to roll something out sometimes, too, you know?
So I love them, it's just impractical to roll them out on this table during this meeting.
Right.
So.
Especially if there's a landscape plan, and the, 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 the plant material is listed on the big plan. Where sometimes it's better to have it, yeah, in, in the document itself, and not just on the plan. That could be helpful.
Okay, okay, yeah, all right, let me, I'll think about how to, how to, how to reflect that.
I thought this was great, I mean, as far as the first draft and.
Right, I, I also appreciate that.
I thought it was awesome.
Yes.
Yeah.
I just got a little afraid, being a small-town developer, if you're gonna do like a three-family. To just trigger the five grand and the eight sets of plans and all that stuff, it's like, what, or, you know, let's think of like three units to 10 units.
Right.
Seems like a lot to go through.
Yes.
For a project that's small.
Yes.
How do you sort of.
But you do have to go through site plan approval.
And even at that, it seems like a ridiculous amount of protocol for such a small project, so could you lean on the waivers a little bit? Is what I was wondering, and you'll be determining that. So maybe if you let it be known that, look, a lot of this stuff can be waived.
Right.
It might not deter a smaller developer from actually doing something.
Right, yeah.
Because if I saw this, I'd be like, okay, I'm gonna be tied up for another year, and you know what? I'll just remodel this single family, flip it, and make my money and move on.
And here's the hard thing, this is literally, with the exception of, with the exception of this fee, this fee, you know, part that I included here, this is literally what's in the bylaw.
Oh, no, it's cool, I'm just, it's great, I'm not diminishing it at all, I think it's awesome.
No, no, I know, and, and that's the thing that's hard, is that, is that I don't necessarily disagree with you in terms of, in terms of, you know, sort of the complexity and what's required under this process, but that's what's in the bylaw. So, so it's like, you know.
It's a catch-all bylaw for all scale projects, that's why we put the waivers in. So I think what Jim's saying is having you understand that.
Yeah.
So that when someone comes in and initially meets with you, talk about the waivers based on the scale of project.
Right.
And, you know, personally, I think, you know, in the beginning, you probably want to talk with the board. You know, I'm getting, you don't have to say where it is, you say, I have an inquiry about this kind of, this scale of project under this section of the zoning bylaw. We're, we're thinking that these waivers would be appropriate, what do you think? But I think we kept it in there, too, that even if we grant the waiver, after we're reviewing the project, we, we reserve the right to ask for something that we've already waived, just as the project review proceeds, that we, we may change our mind about it.
Yeah, okay, yeah, absolutely, yes.
Good, thank you, that's great, and will that be online eventually, that? Or was that, or was that they come into the office and have that preliminary meeting and?
The plan, I, I found a couple of things, there's, I guess there's a form on the website.
Right, yeah.
Which I just discovered like yesterday or the day before. So that, was that typically how people were submitting their, their documents? Because you could upload documents there, and, oh, you, maybe you folks wouldn't have kind of seen that side of things.
Yeah, I think they emailed.
I went to the website, and then I would print it off, and then I hand-watched mine in.
I think a lot of things were dropped off into, to the planning department's office.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a web form that's on the page, and it, and it's extremely detailed. So, so when I looked at that, I thought, oh, this is, this is a whole lot more detailed than, than the form itself, the checklist form itself, which is, I think, what most people probably download, and they check, 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 do I have this, do I have this, do I have this? So there's some, there's some, there's some cleanup work there, you know? My inclination is to not, I was hoping to have this be sort of a fillable PDF, so somebody would just kind of download it, and then they would, you know, do, do, do their thing, print it out and bring it in. Maybe we can migrate to a web form, I'm not super confident with that, especially with this, with this process where they're walking in here and they're getting it stamped and, you know.
I think just downloading that PDF, yeah, as a PDF makes sense.
So I think, I, I think that, that's the, that's the goal, that's the goal, is to have it be just a, something fillable PDF they can download.
That's wonderful that you've already gotten that first draft, that's.
That's awesome.
So, anyway, so the next thing I was working on today was the slimmed-down for the, for the ADU. So, so once we get the slimmed-down for the ADU, then that's gonna be a lot easier for me to have a conversation with the person with the three to 10-unit project, do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Because I can pull that out, and it can be like, this is what we're gonna do when somebody wants to do a detached ADU, or they're gonna do an extension, what have you, it's gonna look a whole lot more like this. And this is what, this is what your smaller project, your smaller scale project, you know, even though this, this is 20 pages, you know, is probably 20% of this is, that's gonna apply to you.
In light of the AG's letter, should we, should you have a pared-down one for Dover Amendment? No, because ADUs are Dover Amendment, I'm thinking like, we've had several childcare facilities that we've reviewed. So maybe, because we can't apply certain of our design standards, I think, to those projects, right?
Well, the way it's written, it's, it's the specific site plan standards, like within the ADU bylaw.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I pivoted from site plan approval to the, the AG's letter on the site plan approval bylaw.
Yeah.
To.
The ADU.
Yeah, on the site plan approval.
Dover Amendment.
Dover Amendment.
Yeah.
So ADUs are Dover Amendment, but MBTA community is not, so we have in that site plan approval bylaw a lot of design standards, which I don't think that can be applied to Dover Amendment uses. So I'm just wondering if we need a different kind of checklist, as the AG's letter cautioned, right?
So you have site plan review, you have ADU, and then you have the MBTA stuff, right? So this, the, the ADU has its own design standards.
Right.
And then the MBTA has its own design standards?
Right, but no, we pulled those out, and we put those.
I don't think it does.
We pulled those out, and we put the, we put the design standards in the site plan approval bylaw.
Yes, right.
But it's the same bylaw that would apply to, let's say, a childcare facility, and so those design, the way I read the AG's letter is, there's certain things that you can subject the Dover Amendment uses to in that bylaw, but not everything, so.
Right.
I guess my thought is that this particular rules and regs for site plan review is for the non-Dover Amendment, and that we should probably have a Dover Amendment version. ADUs aside, because ADUs are also Dover.
The ADUs are the Dover Amendment.
Yeah, but we also get like, you would have House of Worship or something related to that.
Schools, the preschools.
The preschools, those kinds of Dover Amendment.
So if and when those, those, those types of situations come up.
Yeah, so I've reviewed at least three childcare facilities here in Milton that are pretty big, and those.
Well, you said the Goddard School.
Right.
Right, and then, and then.
The Gardner School.
The Gardner School.
And there's also the farm stand on Robin Street, something totally different.
Okay.
The early, what's it called? The Little Sprouts, Little Sprouts was the other one.
Little Sprouts, yep. Okay.
But you're right, that one on, um, Robbins. Yep.
Okay. Okay, yeah, all right. Yeah, I guess I wasn't thinking that they were coming up sort of that regularly, but, but I did read something in your report, which I read every page.
Thank you.
I can show you my, I can show you my notes in the margin. It was something about.
We forgot, I'm sure.
We don't typically get that many, but we just happen to get a group all, like, within a short period of time.
They have a hard time believing the town can absorb more. I mean, we have a lot of daycare right now.
They call, they say they, there's huge demand, that the last one that came in was from the Midwest, right?
Yeah.
Tennessee.
I think of that.
You have the original, you have the original, um, the original, the, the OG school, Milton Academy. And you get, you get the, you get the spillover, you get the spillover.
They have their own daycare.
From Milton Academy.
They actually have their own right across the street from me, this little daycare.
Yeah.
There was just, there was something in there about how the, the, um, employment was reflective of, of healthcare situation, you know? So.
We have Curry College, uh, Labor Day, Milton Academy.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you know, like, Curry College has, um, expanded over the years, and there's pressure points with neighbors on that, those expansions, so, but there, we have no.
Right, Sarah.
So I, I just think it's, we run into this, I think, as new members have come onto the planning board, what can we really do under Dover Amendment uses in terms of our review? And sometimes we really kind of push the applicant probably a bit beyond really trying to encourage them to do things that we can't mandate, but it, it, it would be nice to have a clear.
The Gardner School was great to work with, because they were very reliable.
He was fantastic.
Window treatments, we were able to get detailed.
Lowering the building, everything.
Changing the site.
Even took out the logo. Remember, there were three logos?
I think the biggest move was changing the building on the site.
The building on the site, it looks so, I mean, just seeing the way it's going, it's so much better than what was originally proposed.
It's gonna be great.
Yeah, there's some good language in here, in this, this, um, letter.
Yeah.
The one about, the one about the, um, Article thirty-nine, right, from September eighteenth? So it's, you know, it, it just, it enumerates, um.
Caution.
Balkan height, yard, lot, setbacks, open space, parking, and building coverage.
So some of the other design things that we like to think about on other projects. We can encourage, but we can't mandate.
Yeah, right. And you can't really get too far beyond. So parking, obviously, you can loop in, you know, traffic impacts based on parking. I mean, there's ways to make a case, you know, depending upon the scale and sort of, you know, what's going on in the immediate neighborhood and things like that, but that's just kind of off the top, but.
Whatever thoughts you have about that, we, I'm sure we all would be welcome to hear them.
Okay, yeah, great. Thank you. So we can move on and just, we can just briefly touch on these. We've had this discussion before, um, in August, and I just wanted to loop Liz in on where we had, you know, where we stood on our conversations, things, goals that we had, that we've discussed, things that we've been cleaning up, um, with, such as our traffic mitigation article, which is coming out. But, you know, just sort of thinking about prioritizing, and, and we can put this on the agenda for the next meeting, too. But these were, you know, these were some of the highlights that we had, um, that I just discussed briefly, that we have been targeting and wanting to, to, to see come to fruition. And with, tonight, we've already talked about the hiring a consultant for the zoning, the recodification, um, the sign bylaws, something, um, I think would be really good to tackle, and maybe it's somewhere between the article that we last had, which was very dense in our two thousand seventeen. Maybe now that we have KP Law, we can say, okay, maybe we don't need it to be as dense as it is. We can, you know, streamline some of that language to be a little more simple. It's really, I think, a lot of that language was for people who were in the design field, who are expertise on how the signs are actually designed, but, um, but we can talk about that later. But maybe have KP Law go through, um, sort of where we were in our, in our draft.
Yep.
Just to take a look at that.
Is that in their hands now?
Not yet. I didn't want, I thought, once town meeting, let them get through their first town meeting, and then we can let them maybe begin, Darren can begin reviewing that, just to give us enough time for the target of our spring town meeting. I don't see recodification happening for, you know, certainly not spring town meeting, and I think that, that will be a longer process. So maybe we think about timelines, but I think sign review, I think we can do that for, for spring, uh, the sign bylaw for, um, spring town meeting.
Can I interrupt real quick?
Yeah.
Do you think it would be prudent to give that to a consultant to look over what we did for the sign, uh, bylaw? To see if they can condense it for us as opposed to giving it to a lawyer right away? Does that make any sense, or no?
Well, I think because it came from Tim and from our, um, and John Zickowitz, and sort of some things that they were looking for. I think every town's really different and unique on what they want to control. I think there's some big things that we would just want to, um.
I think a fresh set of eyes, like Liz, would be great.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Liz, if she reviews it, because she's seen what other, some other towns have done?
Uh, I mean, yeah, I, 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 I will, I, I will know better. I will know better in the next, in the next month or two. Like, how much, how much bandwidth I'm gonna have to, because I, I like your idea on that, because honestly, the, the, um, you know, the design guidelines or whatever, the facade, um, I forget the name of the booklet or whatever, but that's, that's really old. And it's not, it's still very good, you know, it's a sol, it's a solid sort of, you know.
It's dated, yeah.
And, and it doesn't necessarily mean I would have to toss the whole thing out, but, but I am, I, I'm, I'm not an urban designer, you know? Like, I mean, there really probably could be a really, you know, good, good reason. The other thing I haven't done either is I haven't really looked very closely at the design guidelines that were adopted by, did you guys use, like, Howard Stein Hudson, I think, right, for something? Was that East Milton or was that New Village?
MAPC did East Milton, and the Village was, um.
I saw something from them.
Tucker, um.
Yeah, it was, it was something, uh, it was a different.
I haven't looked at those. See, I don't know how much of, like, this stuff is already sort of, like, contained in some of those other documents. And I'm, so I'm really just kind of like, you know, so, so it's hard, it's hard for me to say. I, I, but, but I definitely am not the person that's gonna be able to, like, you know, say, oh, this is what, you know, this is what it's supposed to look like from a design perspective. I, that's not my.
And John Zickowitz was really good. I, I think a lot of what, what this bylaw does is it puts into writing, like, our site plan review, the process that an applicant goes through. So it's sort of like the site plan review where it says, okay, th- this is what I'm supposed to show up with when I want a new sign, depending on, you know.
Which doesn't typically go in a bylaw, you know what I mean? Like, it, like, you, so, so, so that might be kind of like, might be the first thing to think about. Like, is to think about sort of, like, you know, as, as per the rules and regulations of whatever. And, and, and then that way, that way, it kind of takes some of that stuff, you know, kind, kind of takes some of that heaviness and weightiness out of, and especially if it can confirm, that, that's another thing I'm, I'm recognizing very quickly, is that, you know, every process has a different, every, every permit, and, and what have you, has a different, it, it, there's, nothing's straight, nothing's terribly streamlined. So, so, you know, it would be fabulous if you could just, you could point to your rules and regulations and say, follow this procedure, because all of these different items would point right to that one procedure, but that's not how things are set up today.
So it would be interesting, yeah.
It, it's gonna take time, but those.
It will take time, and, and as the signs applications start to come in, I think you'll be able to look through that and say, okay, because that's what John is gonna ask, that's what the building department asks for, and that's what John, when, when he has people come before him.
Yes.
Um, that he's gonna say, okay, do you have these dimensional requirements? Do you have the, you know, whatever?
So one thing, um, that I'd like to give you as background is that this effort really started because the sign review committee would make recommendations to approve or not approve, or with conditions. And sometimes, um, if there was a denial or, um, a condition that an applicant didn't support, there might be an appeal, and the bylaw, the guidelines don't have the enforcement that the bylaw does. And there would be inconsistencies in the decision or in the guidelines versus the zoning, or not enough in the zoning, that, um, it could be supported on appeal. So just have that lens in mind when, when looking at.
Didn't it go to the selectman at one point?
It do, that's what it does, and it's.
I don't know that it does that anymore.
They still, well, right now, under our current bylaw, it does still go to the select board. So that's one of the things that we'd be changing, is that.
It would go to the Board of Appeal.
There would be certain things that are prohibited, but then certain things that would be allowed in certain circumstances to go to the ZBA for approval. But we wanted, like, billboards, we wanted to make sure that billboard, somebody coming who wanted to put a billboard, it's, it's strictly prohibited. And it would not be something that we would want to see.
Right.
You know?
And that kind of gets back to that conversation about recodification, because that would be like a prohibited use.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Right.
Like, that, that would typically be where that would land. It would land as like a prohibited use, like, sort of across the board, like, every, every zoning, every zoning use, no, 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 across the board. You know what I mean?
Exactly.
So it's, so, yeah, so I, I, I don't really have a quick answer on.
So I'm not expecting you to say that and write this. The reason why I was asking.
Should we have a consultant come in and help?
Yeah, my whole vision of this planning board was, you know, if you want to come to the board with an idea about a signed bylaw, we find a consultant, we give them bullets of what we think the bylaw should look like. They come back to us and they report. We all sit around and talk about it, add things, it goes back to the consultant. You do that in two or three iterations, you have something that looks decent, you give it to the lawyer, they look it over, and then it goes to town meeting. I mean, what we did for MBTA zoning, and what we did for site plan review, and what we did for ADU bylaw, I get it, we were under the gun to do it, but personally, I find it ridiculous that we were here for four and five hours doing stuff consultants should be doing. We should be just vetting the process and adding our two cents. That's personally what I think a board should do. I understand you can write zoning, and that's great, but if you get hit by a bus tomorrow, who's gonna do it? We have to have systems in place that can actually, when one of us step off the board, somebody else needs to fill those shoes and be able to add to the conversation and push the article forward.
So KP Law is.
Just based on the conversation we just had going around between you and the select board and the ZBA, we should have a consultant doing that for us personally. So we should have a rolodex, three consultants deep that can handle all this stuff. That's the way I envisioned this board.
But KP Law, that is one of the, that was one of the things that I liked about them, is they did have specialty. They have people who are specialized in writing that type of.
Okay, so if they can do both, that's great, and if they can come and, you know, I'm just, I'm not saying, I'm not picking on the, the sign review. I'm just saying, in the future, we should have procedures in place.
Yeah.
So when you talk about goals for the planning board, that would be one of mine.
Yep.
And then set a budget, say, you know, how much does that consultant cost us, how much does that lawyer cost us? So to pass an article might cost us twenty grand. Okay, build that into our budget.
MAPC really has walked us, yeah, through that.
And that's, that's just my vision.
Yeah.
So, to that, to that point, I think, um, and to your point about the, um, if you have a, basically a table, and it says, this is allowed or prohibited, it takes away a lot of language. It's the same thing that needs to be done in the recodification. If you apply that to the signage, you could remove probably pages of language, because it just fits the chart. And we just haven't had zoning that's worked that way here, and I would love to see it that way, because it's so much easier to use. But I, this is where I thought the recodification was going to be helpful, is that we would get that done as a total reformat of how our zoning bylaw is, and then that becomes, in that process, that whoever's doing that for us is making recommendations to us how we work on new articles, how they're structured. And, um, and maybe that will help us be able to do them ourselves or not, but at least it sets a framework for how they're done, because a consultant still needs to know the framework, how we're going to want to structure the, the recodification. And, and, um, you know, definitions is one. Like, so definitions that right now you'll find scattered throughout our zoning code makes no sense. Normally, you go right to the front, and you go to the definition section, and everything ties back to the same thing. And the signs would do the same thing, right? And so, and then everything where you're saying something's allowed or not allowed, or you have these, the tables of regulations, like the dimensional regulations, like you even started with the checklist. That's the standard way zoning is. So we need first to get to the standard level. And that way, it'll be much easier when we're working on something to work off of a standard.
And so, something that Meredith brought up a little while ago was, um, you know, we have, as the town and as a board have gone without staff for a period of time. So essentially, the planning department has saved the town some money, you know, in salaries. So that money should be available perhaps to the planning board, so then we could use some of those mon, funds for consultants.
So that's a, a good point about the free cash. I don't know what the situation is there, but if a request could be made for free cash for the codification, that, something's been on our list for a long time, and it would save money. Planning department, building department, save money, because it would be so much easier to use, and they.
So can we get a list from Nick as to what the savings has been from not having staff at the planning department? And then request that for part of our budget?
Sure. Or just give us a big raise?
I think I would leave that, Liz and Nick can, you know, iron that out, but I think certainly, we haven't spent anything. Our, our economic feasibility study came from last year's budget. So we still have our full budget that can be, could be spent for a consultant if we needed to, to hire, um, a consultant at any point on one of these things. But we might have at least a rough, like, a rough draft to start from, that, things that could be taken out. Like, I know, even with the traffic mitigation, KP Law looked at that, and they're like, okay, you can take out this whole initial section. You don't need to state everything that was changed with, you know, in it, in the, in the beginning of the article. So there, there are things that, um, Nick suggested, all the definitions. There were, if you remember in the site, in the sign bylaw, there were like three pages of definitions. Nick said maybe that could be taken out and just put into the definition section, reducing the size of the article, so.
I don't remember having those issues with the East Milton Square overlay. How did that start? I mean, I think it started before I was on the board, but that seemed to go very, very smoothly with Josh.
It was written by MAPC.
MAPC wrote that.
So we came to them with a concept, saying, hey, we've got this section of town, we want to overlay zone it.
And they did all the public output.
And they worked everything out.
They based it on East Milton, on Milton Village, and they wrote both.
Okay.
And then we, they wrote the, um, Milton Village for the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and that committee turned it over to the planning board and made a few more edits out without MAPC. Um, but we had some people at the time, you know, like Kathleen O'Donnell, who knew how to write zoning and was an attorney. So we were able to make the edits without needing to go back to MAPC. But then they used that final version as their basis starting point for East Milton.
So, I mean, my.
And Nick, I mean, um, Tim Zerwinski for MBTA Communities used the state's model bylaw as his starting point. And then that's what became the things that we worked on.
That was mandated, I get that part, but East Milton Square was not mandated. It was just a great process, and I would love to see us do more of that. Because we weren't beating our heads against the wall trying to define.
So that's one of the things that I think right now, um, not to jump down, but the, the Economic Development Plan, the MAPC, we, last October had had, we, we actually had brought MAPC to begin to initiate that, an economic.
I remember that.
Plan, and we went around and talked about areas that we thought were, you know, high-traffic areas, or what, you know, identifying those different areas. What happened was, um, we had a contract, we had, it was grant-funded, and that funding, we were, was based on federal funding, which was promised through two thousand twenty-seven. But what happened was, um, that federal funding was discontinued, and so the state did not continue that funding until it, it actually terminated as of June, the end of this past June. So that funding, we did like just the very first basic step, but that funding source has expired. So now what we thought, we had plenty of time, we had sort of put on hold because Tim left at that point. We had, you know, just the turnover, and then we, we got honestly really busy with MBTA. We had, you know, just the turnover, and then we, we got honestly really busy with MBTA, and we were in full going, you know, strong with the East Milton overlay zoning. So that became our focus, and we had, didn't move forward with the Economic Development Plan. But this was something that we have not, again, we haven't spent any money. And Nick said there are some grant sources that he's currently looking into. He's also looking into, he's asked MAPC to come back and say, can we narrow that scope? You know, can we still get what we want to accomplish and maybe narrow the scope of what we were asking on the Economic Development Plan? What would that cost? And, but he said if we don't really, if we don't, if we don't get the comprehensive plan that we, that we would like, that's something also that he mentioned free cash, because he felt like that's something that's important enough for the whole townwide to do an Economic Development Plan. And that that's something that he could see us going to that free cash for.
But back to the same consultant, and, yeah, I got it.
And MAPC, because MAPC had initiated that work, so it would make sense that, because they, they were going to do, their next step after the holidays was to start doing a survey and public outreach. And it's also one of the goals of the select board, that they're, they're aligning their set of goals, and the select board has also identified an Economic Development Plan as, as one of their goals as well. So it would be a mutual effort, so it should be something that we could get free cash to pick that back up and have them sort of take that forward for us. So I didn't mean to jump forward, but that, I don't know, was something that we had just talked about. This is something, you know, the Open Space and Recreation Plan has been going on for a long time with a consultant, Horsley Witten. It's under the Planning Department. I'm the representative to that committee, but it really, it, it took, and it's still in process, but identifying all the conservation parcels in the town, identifying what's DCR land, identifying what's conservation land, what is, under the Conservation Commission, what is under, it's conservation, but it's under private ownership, such as the Eustace Estate and, you know, different Wakefield Estate, all the different areas. So it's been really trying to map those out. The last, before Tim left, Horsley Witten was going to send it to the Conservation Commission for them to review. And before it went public to everybody, we were going to have them sort of comb through it, make sure that that was their understanding, then go to the Parks Department to make sure, because some of it's parks land. So there's all these different entities that are involved in the open space in town. And then sort of, they were working with our GIS consultant to sort of map those. So that's where that is, but different people had written different parts, like MPIC, we'd all written, I had written some of the history of the open space or updated what had been updated in the past.
So do you have a timeframe now? Because we all received that email from Rob Lee Vash from Parks Chair.
So I responded, so not yet, obviously Liz is the, would be the liaison to that group, and we have Horsley Witten leading it, but wanted to let Liz get settled in first and then resume setting up maybe a meeting with, with that. So I know the select board has done reappointments for that committee. So it's a matter of just reaching out to Horsley Witten and saying, introducing yourself. Craig was wonderful to work with and maybe see where-
Is there a chair for the committee?
I think I had been appointed to the committee when a meeting, I wasn't there. But, but so right now, we would need to-
Happens when you leave the room.
Appoint a new, yeah, we would need to appoint a new chair. But there's representatives from the Parks Department, from the Playground Planners, the, you know, all the different, it had been Ted Carroll for a long time from Parks. He had been sort of the, Mark Boyle is on the board. He's a, sort of a community at large representative who's the secretary, so.
I, I just-
Becky Simons is on it.
I know that Rob Lee Vash learned through the recreational master plan that they're working on, that having that plan, the Open Space and Rec Plan is required for eligibility for the park grant program. So they're anxious to get it done so that we're eligible, that they're eligible to apply for those grants.
So we do have a part, we do have a master plan, a Parks and Rec. And that's what I kept telling Nick, I'm like, I don't know that-
This is an update, right, the Open Space?
This is an update to the original, but there is an original, so I don't know.
Is it something that the state views as being expired, just like the Housing Production Plan? Do you know?
That's what I don't know, that's why I said Nick should be the one to-
I know in Braintree, they just, they just gave them a two-year extension just like that. It was, it was kind of, kind of interesting. They, they just wanted, they wanted the town to, to be eligible, to, you know, to maintain eligibility for certain, for certain things. And that was just like in the last six months. I, I, I don't, I'm not really sure why. We were, we had already, we had already voted CPC funding for the, for the plan, and so that was why I was involved in, in it. But then they just gave them a two-year extension just like that.
So we may be able to get that out.
What, seven years to nine years or something? I thought they used to be five, but now it's like, I think it went from maybe seven to, I don't know. It was, it was a, it was a, it was a good amount of time.
Yeah.
Where, where the town, you know, basically doesn't have to produce.
I think ours is quite past that, as my recollection, it's like 15 years.
Okay, okay.
Maybe not do an extension for that.
They're not going to get an extension, right.
They had the Forbes Wood, the acquisition of the Forbes Woods property, so that was on, that was included in there.
So was this driven by somebody wanting to get eligible for some funding?
No, I think this was just Tim wanting to up, you know, do an update, but, but really, I think, I've been on the committee and it's been like five years, I mean, we've been working on this.
Part of it is that there's, you'll see that there's very little available land for whatever needs that are out there, and there's a lot of recreation needs, like where to put a field has been really challenging for them. And then I think, just like when there was, like where can we put a new animal shelter? There, there was a lot of difficulty finding a piece of property for that. So they just need to know, like, what are the properties that are available for anything? You know, whether it's a field or whether it's something else that the town needs.
Which has been good, because I think people look at Milton, they're like, oh, there's so much open green space, but they don't realize it's either protected, it's private, it's in conservation, it's DCR land. You know, we can't develop the Blue Hills, you know, it's, so I think there's, I think there's an educational element to this where people are learning, like where, where can we put a school? Like there was no-
I thought there was no land left after the land swap, right? That was the last parcel, and then we put all the other land in conservation.
There's very little.
There's some, but very little, I think.
Very little. The town has not been good about, which is part of the preservation plan-
Fine, we need to buy land.
That we should be acquiring land, whether it's for soccer fields-
Or not put it in conservation. Jesus.
That we should be, that we should be protecting.
And part of the problem is, when you look at a request, like when he, I know that, that the Animal Shelter Building Committee and the School Building Committee both went to former planning director and said what parcels are available. And that's part of the reason why he wanted that update, is that it, there wasn't, there's not a good record of what's available and what jurisdiction it's under. Is it under, you know, Chapter 90, whatever it is for parks or for whatever.
That's why we should have adopted the right to farm bylaw, because then the farms, the town would have first right of refusal when a farm goes to sell. So there's a benefit to giving out tax abatements to farms, but the town is not good about that. So now they've lost their eligibility.
Really?
Another kick in the gut.
Talk to Liz about it.
I think we're the assessors.
Oh, okay. Well, anyway, so those were just, these are just highlights, you know.
Nick, can we talk briefly about the Historic Preservation Mas- Well, I want to do the Historic Preservation Master Plan quickly. It's on here, because the Chair of the Historic District Study Committee came to us, and we heard from, you know, J D Wild. And I was thinking about this, and is there any way to sort of have this kind of district and address his concerns? I think the only way, because this district would have the power to deny, even if the planning board approved a project that came in under the overlay. The only thing that maybe could be done is what their jurisdiction falls under. And one of the things I thought, was thinking of was like, whether this board wants to get involved in helping them. Because otherwise, I don't think there's going to be a lot of change from what they had before to what goes to the Springtown Meeting, you know. So I actually thought, and I think it's something that I may have put in the, our report, is that they should have a consultant, a Historic Preservation Consultant. So I'm wondering whether it's too soon to come back with that district and whether that should come after Historic Preservation Master Plan, and then you can have that Historic Preservation Expert can help with the bylaw. So I just wanted us to, to kind of think, bear that in mind.
Or make them subordinate to us, so there's not two competing boards like JD.
I just don't think state law allows that.
This is the establishment, and actually in-
It would be a problem then.
Yeah, that's what I think too, but, but one thing is, like, I was looking at, could we do like a definition of a building? So that is under, that would be subject to it? Because there, if a building hasn't been maintained, and so now the windows are all vinyl and the siding's vinyl, and there's very little historic material left, why would that fall under this?
Well, like the hat shop, right?
Well, so that, so an example like that, like if, say, the Ferruci Building were to come before, that would be a committee, so this is a first, this, this article is a first step to creating the committee, but it doesn't create the committee, it doesn't say who the committee is or what their responsibility is.
The authority is established in it if you read it.
So-
Or we should ask the Town Council if I'm mistaken about that.
So the preservation plan, you know, could identify different, and we have different historic districts in town. The Lower Mills Milton Village is clearly, has the most significant number of historic projects that have been actually surveyed and explained why architecturally or whatever it is. The problem, because I thought JD did a great job in his presentation.
Fantastic.
And I really took it to heart, what he was, what he was saying and what his concerns are. How you, how you, JD, the way JD goes about approaching his projects, who's to say that another developer will have that same standard? And we do have design guidelines in there, but I do think that maybe a consultant might help them. And again, I keep forgetting her name, but Jennifer-
There's a number of good consultants for historic.
Jennifer Goldson?
No, not Jennifer, who also is very talented, but Jennifer Doherty? Is it Jennifer Doherty?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Who is, she was with Mass Historic, has joined the Barrett Group. So she's, so she's now with Judy Barrett, specializing in historic preservation, and she has the background. So I was thinking, maybe she could be somebody to come and facilitate this and, and talk about how this can be implemented, how this can work for the town of Milton.
So one other thing I'm going to mention is that the bylaw references the report. And I looked through the report. Early in my career here in Boston, I served on the Bay Village Historic District Commission, which is the same kind of commission.
Right.
And we had a report that was pretty detailed about what's considered important characteristics, whether it's a building that's one of the contributing buildings, or what kind of features are, you know, defining features. And there's not that in this report. And I also owned a property that was in the Fort Point Channel Historic District. And that, they have a very detailed report there too. And so, and I went before them for changes that we were proposing to make. I think we would need a more detailed report that the bylaw would refer back to. So I'm just thinking-
We could have specific buildings that are, you're saying?
Right, because, yes, because some buildings are, like the, what's now, what used to be the Funeral Home at the corner of Canton, that was built in the 50s. And if you look through the list, there's probably 10 buildings that were built in the 50s that don't have, I don't think those are the ones that people would be most concerned about. JD probably owns a couple of the ones that people would be most concerned about, so.
So what it addresses is not only the current existing historic buildings, but if there's a new building, to make sure that there's a cohesive look to new construction as well.
But he also is concerned about who would be on this commission, who would have the decision-making authority to say, you can't tear down that 1950s building, you're going to have to do something next to it or on top of it or around it or whatever. And the, and that's a legitimate fear. It's without being more specific about what are the characters, what are the buildings, and what are the features that are most important to be preserved, it'll just-
I think that's a next step.
But the bylaw sets it up. The bylaw sets it up now, so that it doesn't, the next, there's no guidance to them for that next step, honestly. Because there's a lot of history in this, but it's not the physical structures. There's no guide, there's very little on the physical structures themselves. There's nothing, it says like what the style is, but it doesn't say, you know, anything about like, is it, what is it? Like, for example, in mill buildings, one of the features that is defined as one of the character-defining features are the windows and the window patterns of the muttons, et cetera. Because it's that and the brick that establish those as mill buildings, right? There's nothing here that's really saying, this is what's establishing this as a really important physical building. I understand the history part, it's all well-defined. So if somebody comes up to a group that's appointed and, and says, you know, these are what I think are the most important features of this building historically. There's, there's, and the members of that commission at that point won't have a guide. And, and if you establish it first, I can see why the property owners, or owners would be worried because they don't know what's going to come next, and it's already in place, and you don't know how they're making their decisions.
It has to come back before town meeting, though.
Yes, but-
I think what, what's that committee?
They need expertise to help them finish, get it over the finish line. I don't see it being passed.
As drafted, there's, there's some problems.
For instance, you know, you say brick, and I love brick, and I am concerned about, you know, there's a trend now of doing murals on brick. You know, would we be damaging historic brick buildings with a mural just to, to, to satisfy a current trend? So I think identifying buildings with a brick facade, like, okay, we recognize this brick is, you know, X amount of years old, and on this particular building, there should not be a mural, but on this brick, where the bricks are newer.
So again, I'm, I'm not, I don't have an opinion right, right now, I just, you know, that's why I think maybe a consultant, like Jen Doherty, who's with the Barrett Group, might be a good facilitator for this to answer those questions and how the process works. I just, I know, I mean, if every developer was like JD and would come in and do the work that he's doing, I wouldn't feel-
He's the one who's worried about it, so here's-
He's worried about it, right. And we don't want to, we don't want to prohibit him from-
Right.
We're only trying to create the list tonight, right?
Yeah, we're just trying to figure the list.
Trying to solve the problem at the same time.
What I want to-
Exactly.
One of our goals. It's a great agenda item. One of our goals, yes.
And that's not even, yeah, and I didn't have that local historic district, but I think that what you're tying it into is having a preservation plan-
Yes.
-community, which also would be a consultant. And I meant to bring, I meant to bring, and I'll drop some off at your office, some examples of different towns. I think Sudbury, Tim had printed off some really comprehensive. And a lot of the work, we've already done the surveys of the properties, we know our historic districts. You know, a lot of it just is putting it together and sort of creating that preservation plan, but, but we can add on anything further.
And not for tonight, but for another night, we should go through the 47-page report and extract out of it other items that we want to add to our 26.
Yes, yeah. Yep, I agree.
So this report, the Implementation Committee report?
Implementation Committee report, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I think we'll, that could be good, because I think some of those things are in here, are-
There's some overlap.
There's overlap here, but, but you're right, there may be things that we might want to prioritize above these, so. All right, so that was it for this evening.
The Housing Production Plan, just wanted to understand, is that, is there something, is that happening?
So I, I added that because it came across my, my- So I, I added that because it came across my, my radar that, that the existing plan expires in 2025. Maybe it already expired.
It already did.
Yeah, okay. So that's something that should be updated.
So one of the importances of that is it, it protects us from 40Bs if we have a housing production plan in place and we push developers towards those parcels. Is that the way, that's why that's so important?
You can get temporary safe harbor if you're making progress on the production, production, not just permitting, the production of units. So for example, like the Winter Valley project would probably have been enough to say, okay, no more 40Bs this year. Instead of getting slammed at the mall, now we're vulnerable, but we also.
The housing production plan expired or that parcel wasn't in it?
Oh, expires every five years. And you don't have to, it doesn't have to be just those parcels, but you have to show that there's a path. And the, you know, if all the projects that are built now, according to what I've heard, that we're going to reach our subsidized housing, it, it's always a moving target. Because they, my understanding is they don't change your calculation until each 10-year census. Right? So we have another four years.
And you have 25 permitted ADUs that are going to skew it, which is a drag. Right, that adds to our total, 25 ADUs that are permitted add to our total production cost.
Yeah, but you'll see that at the next census.
Understood, understood.
So we're going to have a little bit of protection, but we, it's good to have the plan in case something doesn't go forward or, you know, in four years, when we have the update, all of a sudden we're going to be short again.
And is that something we do? The planning board does the housing production plan?
So the last time it was updated, I served on the committee and it was a committee that select board member Melinda Collins, you know, chaired. And I think I probably, there was somebody else serving for the planning board too.
Do they spearhead that or do we? Like who, who's responsible for that? Because it expired. So who was, who was supposed to keep it?
Typically comes out of like, I mean, my experience has been it would come out of like a planning department. It's sort of like, you know, kind of considered on the community development side of the house to some extent. But that doesn't, doesn't mean that it has to, you know, that it can't come out of your, you know, the selectmen or the Affordable Housing Trust or the, I mean, I'm, you know, I don't know yet enough, like the different groups that are involved in some of these.
It was a committee, it was a committee, but there was also a consultant.
There was a consultant involved, yeah.
That word again.
Consultant, yes.
Especially when something is timely, you know, you don't want to, you don't want to let it lapse. So, you know, you want to get, get something done.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see the data, you know, about the new development and the new permitting, you know, since that last plan.
Yeah.
There's been, you know, like we said, 500 units, but there's also Walcott Woods and.
I have a meeting next week with Milton's member, the South Shore, the South Shore Home Consortium, I think that's what it's called, yeah. So I can, I can try to bring this up at the meeting and just kind of pick, pick some brains with some of the other, some of the other members of that, of that group.
I thought that Nick had reached out to the consultant who had done the last one.
That's what Katie Conlon recommended and I gave Cheyenne that information.
Oh, good, okay. And I thought that she was interested.
She was interested. And she, she had done the plan. So it would be very easy for her to simply make those updates because she has sort of the history and provided that.
Yeah, good. Well, that's great. So that's already moving forward.
She's, yeah.
Okay.
So hopefully that's who Nick has reached out to.
Okay, good. All good.
Good. Well, these are some good goals for us for the next year.
Just a few things.
Just a few. It's aspirational.
Better hire that assistant, I'm telling you.
Hopefully soon. Hopefully soon.
This is all good.
Build your team. It's awesome.
Yeah. So did we get that in the update, the official update?
So, so we're getting close to, to, to an assistant and I'm just kind of waiting. I'm just kind of waiting on the final, you know, references and things like that. So fingers crossed.
All right.
Someone, someone else has snapped them up, snapped them up in the meantime.
How about on the administrative support, like on the meeting minutes, for example?
Yeah, I know. I kind of, I kind of pushed those to the side for now. I, I, this was, this was the assessment. I was like, okay, I don't have to write new decisions. So I'm not worried about minutes right now.
Yeah.
But if, if, so, yeah. So, yeah, they, they need to get done. I mean, so we're already behind, I think, like maybe eight, eight meetings.
Yeah. Julia, who was.
Yeah, we had five sets of minutes, I think that were.
And was fairly detailed in the minutes that were kept. You can see whether you agree with the level of detail before the new person gets.
They were more detailed than the select board's minutes.
Yeah. And so.
I thought they would, honestly, I thought they were the perfect, perfect balance between, between detail and brevity.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Cause I mean, if you can, if someone can get a, a two and a half file meeting into three pages, then that, that's good. They, they must be really good at their job.
Yeah. She did, she did a good job.
Yeah.
It's.
We'll shorten the meeting so it's not as great a challenge.
Yeah. Right, we're going to cut those in half.
That's also aspirational.
This is good. All right. So with that, if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.